Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Let me just pull it a little bit closer.
You don't have the hall monitor?
I'd like to call this meeting to order this 31st day of November 2021. This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners, somewhat a little bit different because this is the reorganization, the annual reorganization meeting for the board that's conducted by the clerk, wherein we will elect, the board will elect a new chairman. I'd like to first start out by the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to introduce two very special people that are going to be leading both of those, and then we will all stand for the invocation and the pledge following. Our pledge of allegiance, ladies first, while it, even though it is after the invocation, is going to be led by Carol Jassler. Carol served three years in the Women's Army Corps during the Vietnam era, reaching the rank of Specialist 5th Class. Carol served with Signal Corps as a Communications Center Specialist, first at the U.S. Army Communication Center at the Pentagon, and then at the Supreme Headquarters, Allied Powers Europe. Oh, I messed that up. It's this place called Shape in Mon, Belgium, is where she served. While in Belgium, she toured Germany with an army show called The Electric Army, which is the military version of the USO. Isn't that so cool? Thank you, Carol, for being here today. And with us to bring our invocation, give our invocation, is Pastor Kevin Ballard. Kevin serves as the senior pastor of Calvary Chapel in Inverness. The church celebrated 16 years of ministry, congratulations, on July 4th of this year. Each week, people gather from Oliver, Citrus, as well as Sumter and Hernando County to hear the Word of God taught simple, straightforward, and systematically. Kevin has served full-time in ministry for 33 years, and 30 of those have been here in Citrus County. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Would you please rise with me for the invocation to be followed immediately by the pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Father, we just express our gratitude to you, especially during the season of Thanksgiving, once again for the founding of our country. It is evident, as we remember how our fathers faced adversity and challenges in coming and finding the new world, that your hand of providence was with them every step of the way, protecting them, guiding them, and then in the founding of this great country, you inspired them with a republican form of government, where the citizens of our nation would elect leaders to represent our interests, our desires, and our needs. Lord, we thank you for that, Lord, for the wisdom that you gave our founding fathers in setting up this form of government. And, Lord, we thank you that you were so pleased that when we beseech you on their behalf, our leaders' behalf, for the wisdom that is necessary to adjudicate the needs that arise and the challenges that arise in a local municipality, Lord. We're so grateful for that. And so, Lord, we ask for wisdom for each one of our county commissioners today, as they hear, and as they contemplate and discuss the items that are before them. And when all the proceedings are finished, we ask that they be able to say among themselves, and we, the citizens of this county, we did what was good to us and to the Lord. We thank you for your wisdom. We thank you for the unity of mind and heart that you give each one that asks you, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. This is a roll call of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner District 1, Jeff Kennard. Commissioner District 2, Ronald Kitchen Jr. Commissioner District 3, Ruthie Davis Schlebaugh. Commissioner District 4, Scott Carnahan. And Commissioner District 5, Holly Davis. County Administrator, Randy Oliver. And County Attorney Denise Lynn, as well as myself, the clerk of the court. We will now conduct the election for the chairman for the reorganization. Board members, may I please have nominations for the chair?
I nominate Commissioner Kitchen for chair and also to close the nominations.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to close nominations?
Aye.
You are duly elected. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep this one.
No, that's mine now.
I just wanted to get my chair. Okay, let's see. Is this mine?
Yep. We got one more to go here.
All right. Thank, board members, thank you very, very much. Before the clerk leaves, I want to say that Citrus County is truly blessed to have the finest clerk of the courts in the whole state of Florida. So, thank you so much, and we can see by how professionally she, the one thing that she has to do once a year, she does it so wonderfully. So, thank you so very much, Madam Clerk. Thank you, members of the board, for this honor. And at this time, we'll call for nominations for first vice chair.
I nominate Commissioner Schlebaugh for first vice chair and also to close the nominations.
So, we have a motion and a second? Is there any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's all beautiful, isn't it? All right, all right. Congratulations, Madam First Vice Chair. This time, also, we will open nominations for second vice chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I nominate Commissioner Davis for second vice chair and also to close the nominations.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's all beautiful, isn't it? All right, all right. Congratulations, Madam First Vice Chair. This time, also, we will open nominations for second vice chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I nominate Commissioner Davis for second vice chair and also to close the nominations.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. No other nominations, no other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. There we go. That was the quickest reorganization ever. We'll give everybody just a second to slide their chairs around. Doug? We need to make sure the second vice chair knows how to handle that.
Do you want Ruthie's? Ruthie's like got firsthand experience.
No, I don't want to do it. No, 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 no. He was saying, "Explain." Are you, and there's, you go down. Wait, where am I?
Ron's got to move on.
You got one more year.
Thank you, folks, for tolerating us while we play musical chairs here. We'll get going in a few minutes.
You got my bad ear again.
Is this the drawing? That's your drawer. I don't know, I feel so close to you guys.
You reach in and hand me my pad. Sure, I think that's all I got.
This one?
Just that little one, right in front of you. Again, yeah. I think that's all I got in there, man.
Do you have a calculator? This is your calculator?
Yeah, but I'll let you borrow it. You don't need to knock the dust off that.
I think you only want some easy calculators.
That's right. I do. I do. Okay, are we ready?
I think so.
Very good. Well, again, thank you so much, board members. Appreciate this. This is like deja vu all over again. Commissioner Kennard, don't get used to that chair down there. I know you like it down there. Let's see, the next item, well, before we move on to the adoption of the agenda, I just want to say a couple things, just so people are aware. The gentlemen up here have served with me before as chair, so they know what they've gotten themselves into. Or two, I won't even say, I'll just say newer commissioners have not. So, just to review things a little bit, and so the public is aware, the way that we run our meetings, the chairman is given very high latitude, or large amounts of latitude, to conduct the meetings within the rules of the board, and so every chair does it a little bit differently. So, just to start the year off, so everybody is clear on where we go from here, just a couple of things. One is, as we go through the agenda, I won't call for public input on every item, such as proclamations. Proclamations are ceremonial, they don't call for public input, and certain things like that. And issues that are strictly board discussion, like approval of the agenda, you won't hear me call for public input on that. When we do have public input, I will call one time for public input. We call for public input three times on public hearings. So, if there's an ordinance or any kind of public hearing, you'll hear me call three times for four, three times against, but, you know, we won't be doing that every time for public input. Also, the board's policy is to take public input at the beginning of the meeting on anything you wish to speak on, and again, at the end of the meeting on anything you wish to speak on, and anytime there's a motion and a second on the floor. We also asked, and I'll remind everybody, every meeting, to please don't have discussions inside the boardroom. If you need to talk to your neighbor, please walk outside, because, believe me, even folks in the back of the room, we can hear you when you're talking, and it becomes very distracting up here. Also, please, when you come in for the meetings, please silence your electronic devices, again, because that can be distracting. A couple of things about public speaking, and that is, you'll be given three minutes by our illustrious second vice chairman here on the timer when it comes to speak. If you're a citizen, if you have filed a letter with the clerk of the court, and it's on her list of approved organizations, then you'll be given five minutes to speak, but you have to let us know that when you begin, so the timekeeper can be aware of that. Also, I follow that time limit very strictly, okay? So, I've said this in the past, I'll repeat it. If my mother is at the podium and the alarm goes off, I'm going to ask her to sit down. Okay? So, the thing is, is if we, in my mind, if I give somebody 20 seconds more or 50 seconds more, then you have to do that for everybody. So, we're just going to ask you to be mindful of the clock, and when your time has expired, please, please sit down. Okay? And, just so, again, you're aware, any personal comments will always be ruled out of order. So, you can get up and say you disagree with somebody, you can get up and say that you think they're making the wrong decision, or they haven't done this, but if you get up and accuse people of being thieves, if you accuse them of being on the take, that's a personal comment, that'll be ruled out of order, and I'll ask you to continue speaking without doing that. Also, our rules are, when you please come to the podium, the whole board is listening, but we ask that you address the chair, okay? And, one final thing, we listen to everything everybody asks to say, we don't comment until everybody's done speaking. That way, we don't step on your time, and it's totally at the discretion of the board members if they wish to respond to you. So, every board member will have the opportunity to respond, whoever they wish to respond to. And then, and then we'll move on, and, you know, I haven't covered everything, I just want to give everybody kind of a sense of where we're going. Here's the number one thing that I'm really, really going to ask everybody to follow as much as they can, and that is, before you speak, ask for the floor, okay? And you do that by any way, but you can, the best way is to say, "Mr. Chairman." And as soon as you're recognized, you have the floor until you give it up. And you give it up by saying, "Thank you, Mr. Chairman." So, you'll be able to talk as much as you want, say what you need to say, and I ask staff to do the same thing. I'm going to ask staff to make sure that we don't interrupt anybody speaking, you know, signal me that you want to talk, and then when you're recognized, you have the floor until you're done talking, okay? So, nobody's going to interrupt staff while they're talking either. So, everybody's going to have a nice pace here to go through this. Also, so people know, we do not take breaks. And the reason we don't do that is when we used to take breaks, we were here until midnight, because a break, five-minute break turned into a 45-minute break and an hour break, and we didn't get back. But, any commissioner that leaves can come back in and ask for, you know, is there anything they missed, or whatever, and every commissioner will vote, so if they're out of the room when a vote's taken, that will be addressed, okay? So, again, I know I haven't touched on everything, we're going to hear, sometimes people say, "Well, you used to do this," or "You don't do that," or whatever, and like I said, Commissioner Carnahan was a fabulous chairman, and he had his way of doing things. Commissioner Kennard was a great chairman as well, and he had his way of doing things. And so, my goal is to give us a nice, calm, quiet setting to run the meetings, okay? So, we ready to go?
We're ready.
Here we go. Let's move on with the approval of the agenda. I see, is there anything to be added or deleted? No, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move that we stop to the entirety.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Carnahan and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Okay, board members, any other discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Move on to the consent agenda, we have multiple items. Do you wish to take them all at one time or individually? What's the board's?
Mr. Chair, we'll take it at the entirety and approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, so Commissioner Carnahan moves the entirety, and it's seconded by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment for any item on the consent agenda? Is there any further board discussion on any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Thank you very, very much. We now will move on to, I can't believe we have no proclamations for Mr. Wright to read today, but we don't have any, so let's move on to open to the public. Anybody that wishes to address the board at this time, please come forward. Again, we'll ask you to fill out a green card and give to the clerk, and if you would, as soon as you start to speak, please tell us your name, so we know who we're listening to. Are you ready?
Good afternoon. My name is Cecilia Treat, and I bet you can't guess what I'm here to talk about. It would be Pirate's Cove, and I brought some people with me today. Will you all stand, please? These are people that approve and want us to do what we want to do as far as conserve and preserve Pirate's Cove. I thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you.
And I'll have more to say when we put it on the agenda.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you and everyone else being here today. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm actually here today-
Can we have your name, please?
Sabrina Watson, sorry, LaCanto. I'm actually here today to address the Citrus County Chronicle November 29th. I'm sure that you will all find it quite amusing, as I found it was quite amusing. The top article is Commissioner Kennard is to offer a new plan on the purchase of Pirate's Cove, but interestingly enough, the article on the bottom is about the public meeting on the Homosassa Park that this commission declined to help purchase. So, I find that quite ironic, and I want to bring it to everybody's attention. We purchase, don't purchase a park for one part of the county, but we're looking at purchasing a park for another part of the county. And I understand that there are some funds that may be coming from a nonprofit organization, and that's wonderful and great, but once again, there's maintenance and upkeep, all things that end up in the tax rolls. I also want to mention that county, the county has changed, as Commissioner Davis mentioned earlier this morning. In 2020, we had 151,000 approximate people, in 2021, we're at 153,000 approximate people. The state of Florida is growing at a rate of 904 people per day, and I understand that that is a large number, but those people are fleeing other states, governmental growth being the number one reason, and they aren't fleeing them looking for parks, they're looking for less taxes, okay? So, there is maintenance involved in this park that, once again, like I said, has to go into tax rolls, and I know that most of this county is most interested in road surfacing or resurfacing, which we can't seem to make happen, and it's time for this county to look at getting creative. Maybe parks belong in the hands of nonprofit organizations, maybe trash belongs in the hands of profit organizations. I don't know. All I know is, is that it's funny that we can't buy a park for one group of people, but we're going to buy a park for another group of people. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Can we have the next speaker, please?
I keep thinking it has to do with- Mary Cedar, it's me again. I'm going to-
Did you give us your name?
Mary Cedar.
Mary.
I'm going to make my point today to tell you a little story, okay? There's a good movie called The Hiding Place. It's my speech again, I'm sorry. It is a story about Corrie Ten Boom and her mother and her father. They were arrested in their home in Germany for hiding Jewish people in their homes from the Nazis. And when the Nazi soldier arrested her with his swastikas on his sleeve, he said to her these words. He said, "Your philosophy does not fit in with the brotherhood of the state, and how are we there today in this country? How are we there today?" And so, I'm a little upset because somebody called the police, a commissioner, on a man who, a 66-year-old man who said the words, "Your days are numbered" on the commission, and he was not a threat at all. He was just saying, "The people of Citrus County are not going to sit back. I personally refuse to sit on my church pew with my hands folded and remain silent while children are being given homosexual messages." It's sad. It is normalizing child sex, and we ought to be able to make our complaint without having somebody call the police on us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to address the board at this time?
Good afternoon. Commissioner Davis, you have to restart.
Sorry. Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Rivera, and I am here for the community of Beverly Hills. I would like this board to consider at a future date, a meeting held after 5:01, say 59 minutes later at 6:00 p.m., to discuss issues in the community of Beverly Hills, a forgotten community that has a unique name, and many issues need to be brought to the board's attention at a time where the working class can attend a meeting, not at 1:00 p.m. where the working are working. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the board? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, commissioners. John Labriola in Inverness. I'm also the managing editor of the Citrus Eagle newsletter, which can be found at citruseagle.blogspot.com. And the reason that was set up was because a number of us in the community felt that the Citrus County Chronicle was very condescending and insulting to certain views, and in a county like Citrus County that's so conservative to have, you know, only one voice of ultra-liberal views that put down and bad-mouth people with conservative views that come before the commission to address various issues, we felt was not giving the community an opportunity to feel that, to have the opportunity for these issues to be fully aired. So, our newsletter is there to allow the public to be aware of commissioner's stances on various issues that the Chronicle doesn't care about or disdains, among them being what the previous speaker said about the LGBT displays in the libraries, and we are listening very carefully to what each one of you does and says. And the one issue that was brought up was having the police called on a resident who emailed a commissioner to complain about those displays in the libraries, but there was another commissioner that also made a comment, maybe not realizing that his mic was on, after all these members of the public took time out of their day to address this issue, and the commissioner called them or said, "This is a joke," or "The library issue is a joke." So, I have gotten a number of comments on that particular comment on the blog, so if you're going to make a comment up here like that, we would also like to give you the opportunity to clarify your remarks or issue clarification, apology, whatever, to explain what it was if you felt the people coming up here were a joke, or, and the commissioner knows who he is, the former chairman, or if you felt that the issue itself is a joke, or if you feel like it's just something that you don't want to address, that would be something that we would love to hear and give you the opportunity, so that we can let the readers know and the public know as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the board? Anyone else? Okay, we will close public input, and we'll listen to the commissioners when they respond.
I have nothing to say. Nothing at all to say. I mean, I think this board has addressed that issue, so I think it's time to move on, and maybe others do the same.
Okay. Mr. Schlebaugh, any comments?
I was just curious, what would be the process to start, entertain the idea of an evening meeting? I would have appreciated that.
You know what? Seriously? One day on the job, and I'm already going.
We'll get you there.
Not that easy, is it?
Do you get five minutes?
Remember, you didn't have to the floor, she still has the floor.
I have the floor, excuse me, thank you. I was just curious what the process would be if I addressed you, the chair, or the administrator, I'm not sure. And, thank you, Chair, that's my question.
Great. Well, my answer would be is that the board would have to want to do it.
Right.
So, and in the past, there has been no, we were resistant to that just because of the cost. You know, you got to get the whole staff together, you got to bring everybody in. Other places do it in the morning and the evening, and it does not affect the turnout. That's what our history's been, but it's always, it's always at the board's discretion. I mean, you set the dates and times of the meeting, so whatever the board wants to do. Yes, ma'am, you still have?
Thank you. So, if this was something that I would bring it onto an agenda and discuss it, I would like to do that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
And again, I'll just remind all the commissioners, you can put anything on the agenda under your item that you want to put on at any time, okay?
I would like to do that.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Schlebaugh, anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. No, and I forgot to say what I'm supposed to say.
That's it?
Already forgot the verbiage.
That's okay. That is very, very okay. Commissioner Davis, any comments?
I would concur with Commissioner Schlebaugh that I think that it, and you as well, Mr. Chair, that it would drive costs up to do that a lot, but I think that we're already here for a 5:01, and if we have a light 5:01, maybe we have a 6 o'clock open to the public, just come talk to us for however long, and if nobody shows up, or if three people show up, we get an early dinner, and if not, we stay here as long as it takes. But that would be a cost-effective way to do it, and not every meeting, but once every other month, every third month, something like that. Just a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. And Commissioner Kennard.
Yes. First of all, I'm glad to see all the folks from Ozello showing up today. Good to see everybody. And Ms. Cecilia, of course, thank you for rallying the troops out there to gain support. The 6 o'clock or after work hours issue, maybe we can revisit our annual retreat that we've talked about doing in the past. We've talked about doing it semi-annually or quarterly, maybe revisit doing that, and rather than holding a formal meeting, do those, do a retreat in the evening hours, again, semi-annually or quarterly, so that the working folks can come and we can have some interaction about exactly, you know, what issues are on their minds, not just from Beverly Hills, but Floral City, Crystal River, Homosassa, Ozello. Okay? So, that would be my thought on it.
Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Very good. Well, and with keeping my promise to the board, I said, "If you elect me chairman, you're going to hear me talk a whole lot less," so I'm just going to say, "Thank you" to everybody that got up and spoke. I appreciate it very much. Okay, so, let's move along then to regular business. We have item, by the way, staff, did you have anything? I guess if Commissioner Schlebaugh puts that on the agenda, that's when we all can have that discussion about all the-
I'll work with the commissioner to prepare the item.
Great. And then we can talk at that time about what the other commissioners had to say about. Okay, very good. Okay, the next item is item E1, which includes all the bids. Do you wish to take them independently or together?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve item E1, A through G.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Okay, just one second. Commissioner Schlebaugh was trying to get my attention, was that a second?
I just had a question about one of the bids, and-
Okay, sure.
So, would you just pull that, or do I ask, how do you want to handle it?
Well, let's do this. Let's get a second, and I thought I heard, okay, Commissioner Davis with the second, so we now have a motion, a second, and your question. So, you can do either, you can pull it for a discussion, or you can ask a question before we vote on the whole slate, whichever you prefer to do.
I think that we could just, I have a couple questions for the staff, and I think I know the answer, but I would like the public to also know the answer. On B, RFQ 18055, this is about, this is about a feasibility study, and so let me go to my notes here. And I, my question was, is it necessary to always have a feasibility study, and how way, staff, did you have anything? I guess if Commissioner Slabak puts that on the agenda, that's when we all can have that discussion about all the...
I'll work with the commissioner to prepare the item.
Right. And then we can talk at that time about what the other Commissioners had to say about it. Okay, very good. Okay, the next item is item E1, which includes all the bids. Do you wish to take them independently or together?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve item E1, A through G.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Okay, just one second. Commissioner Slabak was trying to get my attention. Was that a second?
I just had a question about one of the bids, and...
Okay, sure.
So, would you just pull that, or do I ask, how do you want to handle it?
Well, let's do this. Let's get a second. And I thought I heard. Okay, Commissioner Davis with the second. So, we now have a motion, a second, and your question. So, you can do either. You can pull it for a discussion, or you can ask a question before we vote on the whole slate, whichever you prefer to do.
I think that we could just, I have a couple of questions for the staff, and I think I know the answer, but I would like the public to also know the answer. On B, RFQ 18055, this is about, this is about a feasibility study. And so, let me go to my notes here. And I, my question was, is it necessary to always have a feasibility study, and how much to assisting with documents required to complete the grant application? I couldn't find out on this bid, what it would be to, what it's going to cost us to complete the grant application.
Mr. Oliver, have any...
Yes, this is a restore project. There's quite a bit of paperwork involved with restore because it has to be approved by the Gulf Coast Council, and then ultimately, and the consortium. This was, and this will provide the assistance to do that. This is a project Commissioner Cannard's been very anxious to get going, and the consortium has indicated, depending upon how money is, that they're willing to speed up certain projects. I don't know whether this one's going to make it or not, but we're going to try.
Okay. And the feasibility study is, the reason why I'm asking this question is because there's a lot of times in the public that talk about, oh, they're doing another study, and it costs us much money. But in this grant process, we have to do this, correct?
We, yeah. And also, we're going to locate a given number of reef projects out there. There was a number that's been batted around as ten. I don't know whether that's permissible, but the purpose of this is going to determine balance, what's permissible, and what we can go through the grant. I believe this is totally grant-eligible, though.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other comments on the bids? Okay, I believe the motion then is by Commissioner Cannard, second by Commissioner Davis, to approve bids E1, A through G in its entirety. Is there any public comment on that motion? Okay, Commissioners, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. We're going to move on to item E2. Mr. Oliver?
Yes, E2A, approve budget transfers for Citrus Springs MSBU supervisor elections. And I would note that in your backup, that should be fiscal year 2021, not 2122. It is marked properly as the old year, though. Road maintenance, engineering, aviation, stormwater, visitor convention bureau, animal services, drug court, veteran services, support services, detention services, fire rescue, library, and solid waste for fiscal year 2021.
Okay, Commissioners?
B, approve budget transfers for emergency medical services, VCB, housing services, American Rescue Plan, and the road, and road maintenance for fiscal year 2122.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Chair, move approval of item E2, A and B.
Okay. Commissioner Davis makes the motion to approve, second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public input? Is there any further commission discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Item E3, please, Mr. Oliver.
Yes. A, amend and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution adopting amending various grant budgets and the older Americans Title III B grant budget for fiscal year 2021. B, adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution adopting amending low-income housing energy assistance program, fire hazardous materials, local provider participation special assessment, animal services, fire rescue, state housing initiative partnership, various utility grants, and other Americans Act Title III E grant budgets for fiscal year 2122.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve item E3, A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cannard, second by Commissioner Slabak. Is there any public comment? Board, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Item E4, please.
Yes, adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution amending the county budget for outstanding purchase orders from 2020 to 2021 that will be brought forward in fiscal year 202122. These are items that were opened during the prior year that will not be completed until the next year, so we're moving the balances forward.
Commissioners?
Chairman, move approval of item E4?
Second.
So, a motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Cannard. Any public comment? Commissioners, any, if you need to make a comment, you need to come up to the podium, please. Give us your name, and again, you're allowed up to three minutes to comment only on item E4.
No, never mind, I change my mind.
Okay, okay, that's okay, no problem. Rather give you the chance to have a change of mind than not give you the chance. Okay, so, board, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. E5, Mr. Oliver?
Yes, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the addendum to the State Department of Transportation contract number BE897 between First Hospital Laboratories, Inc., doing business as FS Solutions in Citrus County to be able to test employees for drugs and alcohol from all county divisions after hours and on weekends when workers' compensation or property damage is involved.
Board?
Chair, move approval of E5?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Davis makes the motion. Commissioner Cannard seconds that. Is there any public comment on item E5? Commissioners, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Item E6, please.
E6, approve and authorize the chairman to execute via DocuSign the Q254 Water Sense Label Irrigation Controller Toilet Credit and Non-Residential Water Use Evaluation Cooperative Funding Agreement between South Florida Water Management District and Citrus County Political Subdivision of the State of Florida. B, adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the resolution adopting Water Sense Label Irrigation Controller Toilet Credit and Non-Residential Water Use Evaluation Grant Budget for fiscal year 2122.
Board members?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve item E6, A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cannard, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on item E6? Commissioners, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. Item E7, please.
Yes, approve and authorize the BOCC chairman to execute the amendment to agreement number LP09016 between Florida Department of Environmental Protection and Citrus County, Florida.
Commissioners?
Chair, move approval of item E7?
Second.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public comment on item E7? Commissioners, any further discussion?
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed on E7 that there is an increase, an increase of funding of $110,000, and then we'll have to go to E8, but I just was curious if Mr. Cheek could kind of explain these two things to me.
Mr. Oliver, do you have a problem with this?
No, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Cheek.
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Board members?
Love the tie.
You're correct, these are companion items. We're actually taking money out of one project that's completing and putting it into another one. DEP worked with us on that. It's basically to pay the connection fees for the hospital and the quality inn who have assisted us with that project.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious because it was the exact same amount, and it just...
Yep. We're moving from one grant to the other, and they allowed us to do that, which is sort of rare, so it's nice of them to cooperate with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so on the motion to approve item E7, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Item E8, please, Mr. Oliver?
Yes. E8, approve and authorize chairman to execute the amendment to, this is a companion to agreement number LP09018 between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and Citrus County, Florida. Oh, I'm sorry, I wrote the wrong one. Approve and authorize the chairman to execute the resolution authorizing county administrators to submit the application requesting funds from the State of Florida Emergency Medical Services Trust Fund, contract documents, amendments or modifications thereto and relating, related documents. This resolution certifies...
Mr. Oliver? I think you need to back up. We're on item E8.
Well, I'm sorry.
That's what we should be on.
Okay.
I know I'm going slow today, but you're just going to have to slow down a little with me here, yes, sir. Okay.
Approve and authorize the chairman, authorize the BOCC chairman to execute the amendment to agreement LP09018 between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and Citrus County, Florida. As Mr. Cheek noted, this is a companion item.
Chair.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve E8.
Second.
So, Commissioner Slabak makes the motion, second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public comment on item E8? Okay, board, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. Item E9, please, Mr. Oliver?
Yes, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the resolution authorizing county administrators to submit the application requesting funds from the State of Florida Department of Emergency Medical Services Trust Fund, contract documents, amendments or modifications thereto, and any related documents. This resolution certifies that the money from the EMS grant will be used to improve and expand the county's existing pre-hospital EMS system and not just plan current levels of funding.
Thank you. Board, what is your pleasure with item E9?
Move approval of item E9?
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Davis makes the motion, and second by Commissioner Carnahan. It's going to take me a while to keep from saying chairman, so give me some time on that. Is there any public comment on item E9? Board, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. Item E10, please.
Yes, I need to do a little background on this. Credit goes to Maricel and Francine for getting this finally tied up. This is something we've been working on for a while. This agreement, we're asking that you approve and authorize the chairman to execute memorandum agreement with Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation and Citrus County, Florida. That doesn't really do it justice. What this is going to do is they're going to take over responsibility for the underwater maintenance of all the county boat ramps at no cost. There's certain other things they're going to do in concert with that. The other question that I always get asked is why aren't boat registration fees enough to maintain these boat ramps and that, and improve them? And those fees only total about $100,000 a year. So, again, I like to commend Francine and Maricel for pushing this over the finish line.
Very good, thank you. Board, what's your pleasure with item E10?
Motion to approve item E10, and thank you to the ladies for getting this done.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Cannard makes the motion, and it's second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on item E10?
Cecilia Treat from Ozello. So, does this mean that the responsibility for the maintenance and repair will also be turned over to the fish and wildlife?
We'll let you ask all your questions, and when you sit down, we'll let the administrator answer them.
Oh, okay.
Is that your only question on your head?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that has any public comment on item E10? Okay, Mr. Oliver, you want to address that?
It will for certain components of it, and if the lady can give Doug her email, I'll be glad to forward it to her along with all the board members, you know, a more, what I call generic description of what it covered.
Something with some bullet points that we can look at.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Very good, very good. Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, any questions, comments, or more discussion on item E10?
No, sir.
All right. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Item E11, please.
Yes, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the interim maintenance agreement with Twisted Oak Properties LLC.
Board?
Chair, I move to approve item E11.
Okay, Commissioner Slabak makes that motion. Looking for a second out there.
Second.
Okay. Heard a second from Commissioner Davis. Any public comment on item E11? Commissioners, any further discussion?
No, Chair.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Item E12, please, Mr. Oliver?
Yes, E12, as you recall, we, working with the hospitals, we implemented the Medicare Assessment Program where the hospitals would be assessed for certain property, for the benefit, and the money would go up to the state, to federal government, and come down with additional federal funds. There's some documents that we had to, that they needed at the last minute, and we were asking for you to ratify the signatures on documents contained in A, B, and C.
Chair, move approval of E12, A, B, and C?
Second.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Davis, and a second by Commissioner Slabak. Is there any public comment on item E12? Is there any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. E13, please.
Yes, this, we're seeking your approval for the emergency purchase of four message boards during the rain events that we've had last couple of months. These were for street closures and things like that. I would note that these, this was purchased off what's called the GSA contract, which is the federal pricing arrangement, so it does meet the competitive bid requirements.
Are we eligible for any type of reimbursement for this, or not? Okay, it's cost of doing business.
Since it wasn't declared a disaster by FEMA, or it's not eligible.
Okay. Board, Mr. Oliver's looking for approval of item E13.
Is that moved?
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Carnahan, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on item E13? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Sure, if you give us your name again, and ask all the questions you want.
Lisa Rivera from Beverly Hills. What constitutes an emergency purchase? Where are these emergency boards going to be placed? What type of message boards, electronic or standalone? What line item are the $60,190 coming from? Thank you.
Thank you. Did you get all those questions, Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, the message...
Just one second. So, is there any other public comment on item E13? Okay, thank you. Mr. Oliver, please.
Yes, the message boards were purchased for, we, as you know, we had several roads that were closed. We did not have enough message boards. We used the, the sheriff had some message boards. These are electronic message boards, and we will reuse them. It was funded out of the Public Works budget, right? Stormwater. And we, and they'll be housed at Public Works.
Okay, so I'm hearing a little bit of mumbling up here about the justification for stormwater. Why did we take it out of stormwater?
Just because it was a flooding event.
Okay, so it was related to, okay. Well, that was the questions asked. That was Mr. Oliver's answer. Is there any other board discussion on item E13? Yes, Commissioner Slabak?
Chair, I would just like to note that it was, the motion was so moved, and is that acceptable to you?
Well, because I asked, I said he was looking for a motion to approve, and he said so moved. So, I kind of gave him a lead into it there.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Good, glad you're on your toes there.
Thank you, always on my toes.
All right, good. Had he just said so moved, then I would have asked him. Is there any other questions about item E13? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. All right, item E14, please, Mr. Oliver?
Yes, this is a reclassification within fire rescue. We have, originally, there were supposed to be one person supervising two other people for the, for the medical dispensing of supplies and drugs and things like that. It was determined that it was better to use, so we had three people on shift, so it was basically covered at all times during the day. So, we were, we downgraded one position to be able to accommodate that. This, this provides, this, and there's a slight savings, a thousand, $2,000. This, in our opinion, provides better oversight over the function and gives us somebody 24 hours a day that can, if they need additional medication or something, they can get it.
Okay, board, what's your pleasure with item E14?
Chair, move approval of E14?
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C, sorry.
Okay, that's good. Commissioner Davis makes the motion, and Commissioner Cannard has seconded that. Is there any public comment on item E14? Yes, ma'am.
Cecilia Treat. So, in plain English, could you explain to me again what this means? Does it mean we have three people now, or just two people? What, and what about the, I don't understand why we, it seems as if we took three, two people, and now it's three people.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public input on item E14? Okay, Mr. Oliver, can you...
It was always three people. It was originally going to be a supervisor with two subordinates, and what we've done is down... is downgraded the supervisory position to a person that could do the dispensing of the drugs, and I forget exactly, if you wanna know, Mr. Stevens can answer the question. They're gonna report, I believe, to the training captain, but I don't recall who that, I don't recall if that's right, to be fair, but it's still three positions.
Great. If you have no objections, Chief Stevens, you wanna, as the lady asked, plain English, what's this mean?
So, basically, we're taking a division chief of training, and we're downgrading it to a captain. That division chief of training was gonna work forty hours. Instead of having a forty-hour position, we're taking a person and putting them on shift. This, these three captains of training will allow us to dispense our narcotics as we need to, to all the units.
Thank you. And then your position, you think this is the right thing to do? I'm sure it is, or it wouldn't be in front of us, right?
Yes, sir. We're very busy trying to keep things up to par.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of the chief while we have him up here? Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know, please help me with this. I did have a question, but I didn't wanna bring you up, and it's something that's already passed. It's E, item E two. What's the procedure for that?
If, rest of the board having their problems with just clarification of an item? Chief, are you familiar with item E two?
Yes.
Okay.
I just, I'm sorry, I, since you're there, I, you can, this looks like that you had to move, you, maybe you went over budget, and you had to take some from your reserves.
Correct.
Is there, you're gonna build your reserves back up? How much is that hurting your budget with this overage?
Right now, we, we use the reserves that were built into the budget.
Okay.
We hope to continue to help build the reserves moving forward.
Back up?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanna make sure I wasn't, I appreciate that.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, better sit down, chief, play your chance. Okay, board, we've, Mr. Oliver's answered the public's input. Is there any other board discussion on item E fourteen? Okay, well, that's it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. Item fifteen, before we move on, I know traditionally what they like to do is when these bank statement cards are ready, to take a break and sign them. If it's okay with the clerk, this is what I'd like to do. We have a roomful of people that came here to be heard today. I don't wanna take a break and have them sitting out here while we're signing forms. So, I believe, commissioners, we are rocketing through this agenda today. We're gonna be done well before five o'clock. So, if we can, and if the clerk has no objection, I'd like to go ahead, and we, maybe if we approve it, we'll hold off on the signing of it until our break in between, okay? Then, if it's okay with the board, we have some two o'clock time certance coming up, which you know how much I like those, but we're gonna have to stop for those. Then, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with the board, is I'd like to move ahead to Commissioner Cannard's item, because we do have a roomful of people that wanted to address that, and then we can continue with ours. So, I should've brought that.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, but only if you guys let me, so that's why I always ask. Okay, so we'll do that, then. Let's move on to item fifteen, please. Mr. Oliver?
Yes. This is approved and authorized the chairman, the first vice chairman, the second vice chairman, and the clerk to execute new signature cards and resolution for bank accounts with Tris Bank, TD Bank, Hancock Whitney Bank, and BBVA Compass Bank.
Okay.
Chairman, approve of item fifteen.
Okay, so Commissioner Carnahan makes the motion, second by Commissioner Cannard. Does the public have any comment on item E fifteen? Okay, board, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes, and we'll ask you to stick around as soon as we get to it, everybody can sign those required, right? We're talking about the chair, first and second vice chair, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so, let's see, we're still waiting on the two o'clock, so let's proceed with item F, outstanding commission items. Mr. Oliver?
Yes, we'd ask that item number four be deleted. You addressed this in a prior workshop.
Chairman, approve of item F with the deletion of four?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Davis, and a second by Commissioner Schlebach to approve it with the deletion of item four. Any public comment on that motion? Board, any other discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Mr. Oliver, we have five minutes. Which one of these do you wanna pick on first, that you think you can get done in five minutes? G one, G two, G three, or G four?
Now, we can start at the top, G one.
Okay, let's go with G one.
I'd go donations first, G two, and then G one, and then we'll get that out of the way. That should be enough time.
Okay, let's do G two, then, if you want us to do it first.
Yeah, let's do G two first. Yes, this is just a recap of where we are with donations. I know Commissioner Schlebach has been working at this very hard, and she got some additional donations she mentioned to me earlier today, but it shows where we are, and we just wanted to provide that update, because the next item, which is, and that's solely for information, the next item is to, for you to provide direction on the animal shelter funding, to bring you up to date on the schedule. We had to go through the Consultants' Competitive Negotiation Act. As a result of that, we had to publicly advertise, then we had to go through the ranking process, and then the project team did the oral presentations. Based on those oral presentations, there's a firm that has been selected. You are not permitted to negotiate the scope, though, until you select a firm. The thought behind it, it's state law, and I wish it was slightly different, by the way. The state law is, is that you should pick them based on their qualifications and not based on price. So, we are negotiating the, the scope and the cost, and that will come to you on January the fifteenth for a word to an architectural slash engineering firm for the design of the shelter. What is in this financing document is what I understood that you had told me, that we have talked about this with a financial advisor, and we're proposing to do a twenty-year competitively bid bank placement. The reason for a bank placement over a public offering is that gives us much more flexibility to, if Betts Farms sells, which I did, I, we have an offer that's been made, it was just forwarded today to the outside real estate attorney, but I don't ever count real estate deals done until they close. But if that closes, we're gonna have a clause in there that permits for Betts Farms only that we can lower the debt, okay? Which is the direction that I've previously received from the board. The, and we have two hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars in property sales that have been previously sold that the board said they wanted to reduce the debt by. So, the, the net amount for financing is seven million, two eighty-two, five hundred. I would note during all the architectural presentations for the shelter, all three of the architects and engineering teams expressed concern over construction costs, and normally you would do the financing in, as you get, as soon as you get the architect's estimate of probable cost. We don't, in my opinion, we don't have that luxury. The reason is, is 'cause I think interest rates are gonna start trickling up. They have a little bit already, so I think we should get it done, you know? But everybody needs to recognize that we, you know, the price is a little bit unknown because of construction materials in shortage and things like that. So, the first one is just for information, and that's for donations to the animal shelter. The second one is, if you agree with the methodology that I just outlined, and is contained in the backup, we would ask for permission to go in and start the process for that financing. It'll come to you in February, March, and we will work with the county's financial advisor, and it will be competitively bid among bank outlets for bank, what's called qualified bank placement.
If I could, Mr. Oliver, I think you kind of mixed apples and oranges just a little bit. Item D two, G two, deals with the financing, which is fine, we can talk about that. Item G one also said provide staff direction on the use of building impact fees, so it's more than information. So, let's just strictly stick with G two for right now, since that's what you've talked most about, and this is your plan for the financing for the shelter, right? And that's the details that everybody has in front of them? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the question is, do you wanna use any of the, what's called general purpose impact fees for buildings for this particular purpose?
Okay.
That is an eligible cost.
So, G one B should be under G two, then, if that's what you're asking, right?
Well, somebody died, and correct me if I'm wrong, somebody passed away, and they left money for animal services.
Right.
That money can be used for any purpose the board deems appropriate.
Right.
The question is, is do you want to, you want it to go towards the new shelter, or do you want it to go to something else?
Well, why don't we do this, then? Why don't we just say G one and G two are kind of intermingled, so we need to decide what the board wants to use for funding sources, and then the second part would be approval to go borrow it, right? That's kind of what we're looking for, correct? Everybody clear on that? Madam Clerk? Um, excuse me, madam attorney?
I, I just, I think if you handle G one first, then do G two.
Then we get, well, that's what I was wondering, because when we talked about building impact fees. So, let's see, G one is acknowledge receipt, okay, and provide staff direction of the use of the donation, so let's deal with that first. So, that's what we're looking for. Board, who's got some direction for?
Chair, I would like.
Just a second, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, yes.
Oh, excuse me.
Go ahead, yes.
Chair, I would like to make a motion that we use the donations from the estate of Margaret L. Robinson to go towards the new animal shelter.
Okay, so Commissioner Schlebach makes that motion.
I'll second.
There's a second by Commissioner Cannard. So, let's deal with that first. The motion is to acknowledge receipt and to provide direction to use that donation for the construction of the animal shelter. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now everybody knows what we're talking about, we'll open that to public input. Is there anyone to speak on that, that motion?
Leland Schiff, Floral City. Good afternoon. I support what she just presented to you. I think that would be a very wise move, considering the situation that's up and coming, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on, on that item? Okay, so there's no other discussion. We'll come back to Commissioner Schlebach, and she made the motion. Do you have any other discussion on that?
No, sir, and we're just taking G one A, correct?
Right.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Dealing with G one A right now, that was the direction. Commissioner Cannard, anything?
No, sir.
Yeah, other board members, any other comments on that?
As long as we're allowed to do it, that makes sense to me.
Nobody has been waving their hand, saying they can't, so.
Exactly. I would assume madam attorney would be jumping up and down by now.
Madam Attorney?
The, the bequest was simply animal services, so that's why we needed your direction as to what animal services means, and to you, in this case, it seems to mean building the animal, new animal shelter.
Well, and I would say, as you know, I haven't been the biggest fan of this project, but if we're dealing with somebody's legacy here, it seems that putting it towards capital would be a much longer lasting use of it, so.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so, and no more discussion from the board on item G one A, is what we're talking about here.
Well, I think we, we do need, we also.
We, we'll get to that, just a little bit. Okay, 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 so G one A, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, that's unanimous. Let's go to G one B, provide staff direction on the use of building impact fees. Now, we're gonna need to, to do that. What are you recommending? Or don't you have a recommendation? You just wanna know directly?
I don't really have a recommendation. General building impact fees can be used for any governmental building purpose, and it's really a policy decision.
Okay, and the attorney is in agreement with that?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, great, okay. So, yes, ma'am.
I wanna speak in a very general terms here.
You wanna get a motion on the floor first?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead. You can do that, or Commissioner Cannard can, 'cause he had his hand.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we use the impact fees for the construction of the shelter.
Second.
Building impact.
Building impact.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Cannard, and a second by Commissioner Schlebach, okay? Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Davis, you had comments?
Yes, sir. So, I'm gonna use the analogy of every time I bought a car ever since I was taken advantage of when I was a coed in college, and they saw me coming a mile away. I had gotten financing for what I wanted, the top I wanted to spend, and that, by God, I didn't go any further than that. The problem is, is that construction costs are going up right now, and we don't know, so I feel like we're caught between this rock and a hard place. So, to my mind, the G two and G one B is a little bit intertwined. If we end up, we don't wanna act like we're an open bank, because we need to keep this as tight as humanly possible, but on the other hand, reality is reality, so to my mind, impact fees should go towards, they absolutely are a great use for this. I just wanna be, make sure that they don't reduce the amount so much that we go for in our ask for the bond, that we end up short on the backside. It's almost like impact fees are our hidden little fund, that if really, we really can't get it as cheap as we wanna get it, that we have a place to go. Hopefully, that made some sort of sense. Mr. Chairman, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cannard, you had some comments. And by the way, I know I didn't go to the public on this, we'll come back soon as we get the board's feedback on this, yes?
Listen, I am fully appreciative of the increasing cost of construction right now. However, you know, once we do, or if we do, set that number by authorizing, you know, the, this, this bond or bank loan, that's the budget, and it's up to, it's up to the, ultimately, the contractor and everybody else, including us involved, to stay within the budget. There's certainly an awful lot of donations from the public that are coming in for the additional items afterwards, but the, the basic, or the construction of the, the shelter itself, the basic shelter itself, there's a budget, and everybody needs to understand that from, from the beginning, including the contractor.
Okay. Is there anybody in the, in the public that wishes to speak on item G one B?
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond to Commissioner Card, I just wanna make it absolutely clear, I agree with a hundred percent with what he said. What I brought up was more in terms of a collegial discussion, I think we're all on the same page, that we have to be fiscally prudent and responsible on this, so.
Yes, and please come up, just hang on a second.
And I'm done.
Okay, that's okay. I just wanna interject, I think, I like the way this is broken down, and you'll see where I'm coming from on this. To give you an example, I can support, and depending on what the public has to say, I will vote in favor of item G one, which I did, and item G one B, which I can support that, because it's an amount, and it tells us where we're going. I won't be able to support item G two, for the very reasons given, and that is, I've said all along, it's not that I'm against building an animal shelter, it's just I'm against saying we're gonna build one when we don't know what it's gonna cost. And so, where I can support the first parts of it, I can't support the second, so I think that is a natural breakdown. And that just goes back to what we're saying. Yes, ma'am, please come forward. We're dealing with direction of building impact funds.
Cecilia Treat. So, I think you answered my question, because I'm a little confused. If you use the impact fee, is there a set amount of money that we use for this impact fee? I mean, can we, do we, where, are we going to fund the animal shelter with the impact fee? Is that what we're going to do? And is there a, a limit on the impact fee that we use for this?
Okay, Mr. Oliver?
Yes, the limit on the impact fees, the amount of the money in the account, that money is designated for public buildings, if you will, and it can be used for any public building, as long as it covers that general purpose. So, the limit on the amount of money, in our opinion, and I'm sure there're gonna be more impact fees that come in the next week, two weeks, but I don't know how much, is to sweep that account for the entire balance, now, if that's your desire.
And that, what is that amount?
It is, what is it?
'Cause the question was, will this fund the shelter? And I don't believe it will.
No, it's four hundred and some.
Four hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen.
Great, okay, so there's the answer. The building impact fees would be four hundred and forty-two and some odd dollars, thousands that would go to that. Was there any other public input on that item?
We haven't got to G2 yet, correct?
Uh, no, sir. We're still on G1B, okay, about the impact fee. Anything on that?
Well, the only, the only thing I'll say is, we, we did set a kind of a budget because I, I do believe we set seven and a half or, I, I believe seven and a half million. Um, and then what was collected, we could use, uh, to go over that. Um, so, you know, I do think there's a number that, that this board put on there and it was seven and a half million.
Okay. So, any other discussion on G1B? Mr. Oliver, you got your direction you're looking for on the impact fees?
Yes, the, what it asks is that you, uh, vote to, uh, in this motion to take the four hundred and forty-two thousand, six fifteen, uh, in building impact fees and use it for construction of the new shelter.
Okay, and I have down here, I believe that, uh, am I correct? And this Commissioner Canard made that motion and a second by Commissioner Schlebach?
Yes, I just want to make sure that, uh, that we're clear that this is reducing the amount ultimately that we're gonna have to borrow.
Does that everybody's understanding?
Yes, sir.
That's what I understood.
Okay, Mr. Oliver, clear on that?
I'm clear.
Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. And let's go ahead, since we started on it, let's wrap up item G2. Then we're gonna go to our time certens that we're just a little bit behind on. Then we're gonna go to Commissioner Canard's.
Yes, on G2, if you look at the bottom of the page, uh, it showed a net borrowing of seven million, two eighty-two, five hundred. Uh, what I heard was that you all wanted to further reduce the borrowing by the four forty-two, six fifteen, uh, that was the, the bequest of the person and then the impact fees, so it would reduce by, let me get the number, uh, about a million dollars. So, you want to reduce the borrowing from seven, two eighty-two, five hundred to six million, two eighty-two, five hundred with the caveat that we, you know, construction costs are very volatile right now.
Mr. Car, Commissioner Car.
The question I have is, I'm, I'm fine with that, but the question I have is, we don't even have any bids in front of us, okay? So, you know.
Is your mic on?
So, when we talked about it last time, you know, these, them bids come in quite a bit higher than that. So, my question is, if we go out and borrow, let's just say six and a half million and the costs come in at, uh, you, you know, eight or nine million, where, where's the other money gonna come from?
Any thoughts, comments?
I can answer that.
Sure.
Well, I mean, even if, even if we go over what's been donated, I mean, i- if, if we use all that money of even what's been donated, uh, where, uh, are we gonna find the extra money to, to fund this? If it go, if the cost exceeds those?
Okay, is that your question?
Yeah.
You wanna respond?
I am going to take the very positive approach and tell you that we have over two point four million and I got a couple little, three donations today, little donations. I haven't even begun to fundraise.
Okay.
And I really believe that financing the seven, what, what we're down to now, we were at seven point five and now we're at seven point two.
Six point two, I think Mr. Oliver just said.
How did you go a million? It was only four hundred and-
Now, it, the reason was is because of the bequest of, of the estate and because of the, uh, impact fee number, the consensus I got from the board on the last item was to reduce the borrowing by that amount also.
Wait, on A, we said that I, my motion was to use that money towards the new shelter.
That's correct.
And, um, I didn't say that it would go toward, you know, it could be in the, the donation side, or you're saying, we did not decide that part.
It's up to you all if you want to revisit it.
I thought it was very clear because I made the comment about it going to capital, which meant it was going to the building.
Right, right, right. But I, I, but, but it wasn't clear to me because I, it's fine, I think we should clear it up though, because I was thinking that that money was part of the two point four million extras. You're saying you want to reduce the-
Seven point five.
I, I, I don't know that we should, what, whatever the board wants.
Just, just, well, let's, let's back up and clarify. Originally, Mr. Oliver said we need to borrow seven point five million, okay? Then the board said, let's sweep, or let's take the donation from the Margaret Robinson estate and put that towards building the building, which would reduce the seven point five you have to borrow. Then the board said, take the building impact fees and reduce and put that towards the building and that will also reduce what needs to be borrowed. And I think that's what, in my mind, that's what we were talking about, right?
That's what I thought.
But, um, may I ask?
Yes, yes.
That, um, we need to clear that up because that, that wasn't the motion I made. I just said that it would go, that money would go towards the new shelter. I did not specify whether it went to the extras or towards, it's going to capital, yes, but, um, I didn't see it that way. So, if you need me to amend something, I would be happy to do that. Um, I think that, again, I feel very positive about this. I haven't even begun to scratch the surface with donations. And once we break ground, I think that you're gonna see this community really rally like they did with, with the YMCA.
Well, I don't know that we can amend the motion because it's already been voted on and passed. So, i- if that is not the way you want to go, you're gonna have to make a motion to rescind that motion, to eliminate it, and then we'll go back and deal with it all over again. But the question is, that you're gonna have to consider, will the rest of the board go along with that? Because what you're saying is you now want that four forty, you want that estate money to go towards extras, not towards the original building of it, right?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I just want to make sure that-
Let's do this, you make very clear what it is you want to do. And then we'll make sure we're all on the same page.
Can I ask attorney?
Yes, yes, you may.
Ms. Lynn, what did you hear the motion that I made specifying? So, I, I think that your motion was to determine that the, the gift, that it be used for capital for the animal shelter rather than animal services in general. So, that's your motion, and I think that that's fine. Now, we're on the second item and deciding how much to borrow. So, it sounds like some of you want to borrow less and reduce it by the amount of the Robinson estate and maybe some of you might not want to re, borrow less and reduce it by the Robinson estate.
I don't want, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what I think I'm hearing is Commissioner Schlebach said, yeah, put it towards the shelter but not towards the base amount, put that towards the extras. Is that what you were saying?
I just said, put it towards the new shelter. I just want to be-
You need to be specific, where do you want it to go?
That's why, that's why I'm visiting because if, if, I didn't say the word capital, you did, but I, I'm fine with that and leaving it and as long as you are saying that my motion you heard was going towards the capital. May I?
Yes, please.
May I respond? I, I think that your motion is fine and I think I know what you meant, but now on the second one, that's where you guys are gonna have to be clear because I think that Mr. Oliver might have misspoke somewhat. The way that I'm understanding the second portion is that you're starting out at seven point five million, subtracting the two seventeen-five, which, those are those, uh, the listed amounts. And then we're also addressing the building impact fees of four six, four forty-two, six fifteen, and we're also addressing the three fifteen. So, if you start out at the seven point five, subtract the two seventeen-
Six million, two thirty-eight, one twenty.
As I was saying, because I don't think like a numbers person, I'm just a lawyer.
So, when it comes to the bill.
Let's, let's, let's-
I don't send bills.
No, no, okay.
May I please finish?
Yeah, let's stop the chit chat, let's stick with this because this is why I get so frustrated with this, because we all act like we know what we're talking about and then when we come down to it, we have this disagreement. So, let's make it crystal clear, written in stone, that everybody knows what it is they have voted on or will be voting on. So, let, well, let's start with this. Mr. Oliver, you tell us, as you have said here, what you understood our direction to be, then we're gonna let Ms. Oliver, or Ms. [laughing]. Ms., uh-
You got, you're getting all choked up here now.
I know, yeah, I'm just trying to keep all the parties straighter. So, we're gonna let the attorney then address that to say if that's also the understanding and then we all have to be on board with that. So, tell us what your recap of what you heard is.
What the original borrowing limit was for the new shelter was seven point five million dollars. Uh, what you all previously directed was that would be, uh, reduced by miscellaneous land sales, which had been two seventeen, five hundred. And then the way that I understood it was it would be reduced by the impact fees of four forty-two, six fifteen that you've indicated you want to sweep that account. And then also reduced by the Robinson estate, which is six oh one, seven sixty-five, which would, uh, result in a net borrowing of six million, two thirty-eight, one twenty.
That's what I understood. So, what, what is it now that we're confusing? Now, Ms. Lynn, do you, do you concur that that's what Mr. Oliver has stated succinctly? And that will determine if we're all on board with that? Because that's what I understood it to be, so.
I, I was with him until he said six oh one, seven sixty-five.
Isn't that what came from?
It's three fifteen. No, no, she-
Okay. Let's make sure we're clear on how much, how much, uh, Ms. Robinson left us, what is it, Ms. Oliver?
Is it my turn yet?
Yes, please.
Thank you, all right, so, my turn. Uh, we're starting out at seven point five.
Mm-hmm.
Subtracting two seventeen-five, subtracting four four two, six one five, and then the issue of the estate, which is three hundred and fifteen thousand.
Oh, it's three fifteen.
I, I hear perhaps four of you saying that you want the three fifteen to reduce that amount, and I hear one of you saying, no, I want the three fifteen to go to the extras.
Okay.
To be fair, I haven't spoken yet.
Right, okay.
So far.
So, let's make, let's back up now, that, so if Mr. Oliver concurs, it's three fifteen and not six oh one, we now have-
I'll rework the number.
Okay, so we're all on the same page as that. Now, we need to determine that the direction we have gone is the direction we want to go. So, we'll go back to Commissioner Schlebach.
Thank you. I agree with what you're saying. I just wanted it to be clear and I felt if I wasn't clear in my motion, that nobody else was clear. So, I agree with everything you're saying, that it would go towards the capital, the three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I don't know what the number is to be financed because I don't, my calculator doesn't work, but, um, I do agree and I believe my motion was correct then.
Okay, so that's what we've already voted on, so we're good with that. Yes, sir?
Yes, I revised those numbers based on the three fifteen that Ms. Lynn corrected me.
Yes!
Okay, and that would make the net borrowing six million, five twenty-four, eight eight five.
And in all fairness, that's what you said in the beginning, I believe, when you said some seven point five to six point five million. But anyway, we're, we're close.
Let me bask in being correct.
Okay, so, anyway, now with that, um, we did have total discussion about items G1A and B, and we voted on those, have we not?
Yes.
Wait, we had, did we vote on B? We haven't voted on B yet, okay? We have not, right? Okay, so that is giving the direction to use to sweep the four forty-two, six fifteen from the building impact fees. Uh, I thought we did vote on that, but perhaps we did. So, just to be clear, just to make sure everybody's happy, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so we're unanimous on G1 and G2, um, or no, we're G1A and B. Now, we're up to G2. Why don't we take a break from this and move on to those other items? We'll come back and discuss the financing. So, the question now is gonna be, if we do what we said above, the financing now amount is six million, five hundred, right? Okay, so, at least we're leaving on common ground here. We know where we're gonna, where we're gonna come back with. So, at this time, we're gonna jump up to the two o'clock time certain. We have some public hearings we're gonna do, I believe. This first one will be H1. We're gonna conduct a, uh, public hearing on the notice of intent to use the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem assessment. Oliver, who's doing this?
This is the standard annual notice we have to do for, uh, to use the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem assess, assessments to place it on the tax bill for fiscal year beginning October first, 2022. And we would ask, uh, once you've concluded the public hearing, to adopt, uh, items A and B.
Okay, very good. So, we're gonna do the public hearing first and then we'll deal with the board's direction on the adoption of the ordinance or not. Okay, so at this time, we're gonna open, uh, item H1 to the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak, either in favor or opposed, or anything there about item H1? Anyone speak on item H1? Third and final time, anyone speak on item H1? There's no public comments, so we will close the public hearing. Board, what is your pleasure? We're looking probably for a motion to adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the resolution.
No move.
[laughing] I think he beat you by a tad there, so, okay. So, we have Commissioner Card, who makes the motion, and Commissioner Schlebach makes the second. We've had the public input. Is there any other board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Let's go on to item H2, which is public hearing. Clark Stillwell for Kevin and Angela Schaffer, or Schaefer, or however that's pronounced. Good afternoon, is your microphone on there, Mr. Stillwell?
Yes, working.
Hello? Now it is, okay.
Okay, thank you. Clark Stillwell, on behalf of the Scheflers, my professional address is 320 South Highway 41, the Brandon Bank Building, here in Memphis, Florida. Commissioners, this is a vacation of a drainage and utility easements between two lots and a recorded plat. The Scheflers own both lots. Their intent is to utilize both lots in the development of the site. They've already partially developed the site. And Ms. Katu has an excellent graphic of what they intend to do. We sent letters to all the utility companies and they had no objection. Uh, the engineering department had no objection relative to the drainage question. There have been, I believe, two other like vacations in the subdivision within the last year. Very straightforward, standard type matter. If you have any questions, I'll answer them and I'll rely on Ms. Katu's, uh, graphics. They'll identify clearly what we're trying to do.
Okay, uh, Ms. Katu?
This is a vacation to vacate.
Is your microphone on?
It says it's on.
What's the problem with the microphones, Mr. Wright?
[laughing] There, I'm working now.
Yeah, okay.
All right. This is to vacate some plat, drainage and utility easements, um, in Lot four and Lot three, block sixty-one, Crystal Manor, unit number two. And this is an aerial of the site. The applicants own both lots and they have this easement lying right in the middle on Barbary Way. And it's not much to see there, but this is approximately the location of the easement. And this is a site plan. You can see what they had to do with their driveway to stay out of that easement, but they do have a detached garage over there they'd like to get to. So, the Planning and Development Commission did here's application on September second, 2021, and recommend you approval.
Okay, thank you. Does the, the board have any questions for Mr. Stillwell or the staff? Okay, let's open this up then to public input. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or opposed to this request? Anyone to speak in favor or opposed? Third and final time, anyone to speak in favor or opposed to this resolution? So, we'll close the public hearing. And board members, what's your pleasure?
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. Chair, I move to, um, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the resolution and direct the clerk to record the resolution.
Okay, thank you. A second by Commissioner Canard. And we've had the public input. Board, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and passes unanimously. Let's move on to H3 at two oh five, we're still good on all these. So 205 is a public hearing on ordinance pertaining EMS fees.
Yes, I asked Mr. Stevens, if you will, to come forward and explain these. Essentially, what we've done is to take the fees that were recommended by Nature Coast Consultant and come forward. There is one additional fee. As you're aware, one of the keys to success in an ambulance service is to ensure that the hospital turns it around timely. And this provides for a charge to the hospital if they exceed 30 minutes.
Chief, you want to tell the public what they get this comment on here?
So these are the fee, this is the fee adoption schedule for EMS services. The fee adoption schedule was the fee adoption schedule that was recommended from Finch and Associates for Nature Coast EMS. Basically, we adopted those fees and the recommended fees for the upcoming year. And then we also added the hospital wait times. So if we have an ambulance that is sitting at a hospital, and if they're sitting there more than a half an hour, then we start charging them for that cost of that ambulance, which is $135 per hour. So we broke it down into a quarter at $33.75 per hour. So therefore, if we have an ambulance that's waiting at the hospital to leave so they could take more 911 calls, at that time, the hospital would be invoiced from our office. Is there any, any questions?
Any questions at the chief? Commissioner Carnahan? Okay.
I, I just don't know how you're gonna collect that. I mean, I know you're gonna bill the hospital. That's just gonna end up in a fight. I, I do understand that we don't need to be having zero out time because of the hospital. But again, this is gonna just lead into some kind of a fight between us, is where I'm worried this is gonna go.
Commissioners, any questions for the chief, staff? Okay, thanks, chief. Appreciate it. This time, we'll open this to public comment. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak pertaining to the ordinance for the EMS fees? Anyone to speak on this ordinance? Third and final time, anyone to speak on the EMS fee ordinance? We will close the public hearing. Board, any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
The question I have is, is, are other counties doing this? Okay, other counties are doing this also? Madam? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Kennard.
Just in response to Commissioner Carnahan's comment, and, and I fully understand what he's saying. But when the hospital sends out an invoice, they expect us to pay their invoice.
Yes, sir.
As individuals. So when they receive invoices, then they need to pay theirs. Nobody's here to, from the hospitals to discuss this, so I assume that they're okay with it. So hopefully, they understand the importance of moving, not, not just to get the ambulance back on the road, but they've got a patient on a stretcher to address that, that patient in timely manner so that we can get that EMS truck and personnel back out on the road.
I agree with you on that. I just, you know, wanted to make sure other counties were doing it, and, you know, we, we had the ability to collect that money.
Nope. Mr. Slaybon?
Chair, I, I think this is going towards what I, I had a main concern about of employees, EMTs, sitting there waiting, and the clock ticking. And yes, you can collect, I think you get 100% of what you're billing in this case, as far as the inter-facility transports. But if you're having to wait an hour, hour and a half with two employees, your, your profit goes down. So I'm glad to see that there is a little caveat in there to collect the 100, I think the basic rate. So I think this is moving forward, and, and it's a good step.
Okay, so we've had the public hearings, so we'll be looking for a motion if you wish to do this to adopt your chair. Go ahead, yes, sir.
I think that we move to adopt, let's see if I can get it right here. Move to adopt the, the fees for the ambulance fee or move schedule.
Okay, so that's the, the whole fee resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Commissioner Kennard, or Commissioner Carnahan makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaybon. She got a little quicker up here this time. Okay, and we've had the public comment. Is there any further board discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Let's see, H4, 210, time certain, public hearing on ordinance pertaining to simulated gambling devices. Who's, who's gonna be talking to us about this, Mr. Oliver? It's got the county attorney's name on it, so.
Yes.
We should ask the county attorney.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Sorry, I was crunching numbers, which I'm so good at.
And I would, Chair, I would like my calc, calculator back.
Because yours works.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, Commissioners, this is, you, you are going to hold a public hearing to determine whether or not to adopt this ordinance. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, adding Chapter 10, Article 5, entitled "Simulated Gaming Devices in Internet Cafes", providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, providing for codification included into the code, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And if you'll recall, this came before you at the request of Commissioner Kennard and the sheriff and representatives of the Sheriff's Department in order to have this ordinance to curb the proliferation of internet cafes within the county.
Thank you, ma'am. And if this is approved today, the effective date is the date of signing?
10 days after.
10 days after. Okay, great. Okay, so with that said, we will now open up the public hearing pertaining to the simulated gambling devices. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or opposed to this ordinance? What's an ordinance? Let's do it this way. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Captain Brian Swidell. We were here before. Lieutenant Callahan had to step out for a second. Sheriff's Office business never stops. But we were just putting forth our effort towards this so that we can keep kind of a, ahead of the curve on this and cut costs for the county.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is anyone else here to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone else? Third and final time, anyone to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone here to speak opposed to this ordinance? Anyone to speak opposed? Third and final time. Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing. Commissioners, what is your preference with this?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we authorize the chairman to execute this ordinance.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Davis. We've heard from the public. Is there any other commissioner discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. And let's finish these out with item H5, the 215, time certain. And this will be, has the attorney's name on this one as well.
Who snuck my name on there?
I was gonna say, it's a vacate. You wanna do this?
No, no, sir. Actually, Ms. Kattu will.
Ms. Kattu will do this, okay.
And I, I don't see the applicant here. I'll go ahead and go. This is to vacate a six-foot plat of utility easement lying on Lot 2 in the Taco Gordy Plat that is on US 19 in Homosassa, where the new Taco Bell is. This is the site, the aerial. It runs right in the middle of some currently vacant property. This is what you see right now. That's not quite the location of the easement, but it's as close as we can get on, on the ground. And that's what it looks like on the plat. The utility companies have approved this, recommended approval of this. There was no concerns. The Planning and Development Commission discussed this on October 21st, 2021, and had recommended approval. They're trying to build a tire store in this location, but this particular item is right in the middle of where they want to construct.
Okay, and so again, the Planning and Development Commission has reviewed this. So we will now open this up to a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Let's see, this is an ordinance, right?
Resolution.
It's a resolution. So I'll just ask, anyone here to speak in favor or opposed to this resolution? Anyone in favor or opposed? Third and final time, anyone to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Chair, move approval of item H5B, authorize the chair to execute the resolution and approving PV 21-6 and authorize the clerk to record the resolution.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnahan. Okay, so we've had the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any other discussion on H5? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Commissioners, if you don't mind, let's go ahead and move up to L1. We'll have that discussion, and then we'll come back to the animal shelter. Okay, so Commissioner Kennard, you wanna go with your item of L1?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What, what we've got, what I'd like to do is have a discussion of a different approach to acquiring this piece of property. The, the Pirate's Cove property, as we've been referring to it, is, is actually comprised of five different lots. And what I would like to do is utilize the, as it's laid out, park impact fees. I would like to request that it go on the agenda for the TDC, to request 100,000 from their special projects fund. And we have, I believe it's 85,000 left in the Duke Special Projects Fund to go towards the purchase of the, of four of those lots. We would, unfortunately, we would need to get a modification of the appraisals. I would like to direct staff to contact the two companies that did the appraisals and find out, you know, what would, what would be involved, cost-wise, so forth, of getting those. Because I, I don't see it as an entirely new appraisal, just carving out the smallest of the five lots. What will happen then is there is a nonprofit willing to accept the donations from private individuals who have expressed an interest in helping the county get this done. And the nonprofit would negotiate the price of the, that fifth parcel, would use the private donations to pay for that fifth parcel, and then would convey that fifth parcel to the, to the county. So in essence, with the help of private donations, the county would be acquiring the entire 3.6 acre parcel for about, if you'd say 50 cents on the dollar, about half of what their actual asking cost is, or asking price is for this. So that's, that's what I'm looking for.
So are you prepared to make a motion to put out there? Because if nothing else, you need to be able to give staff some direction to do what you want to do, so.
Yes, I, I would make a motion that we direct staff to contact the, the two appraisal services and negotiate the price of, or, let me modify that. I would, I would direct staff to, to get the four parcels reappraised and use the $190,000 out of park impact fees, put an agenda item on the next TDC agenda to request $100,000 from the TDC special funds account, or special projects fund, and use the remaining 85,000 of Duke Special, Special Projects Fund to go towards the purchase of these five lots. The total amount to be spent by the county on this would not exceed that 375,000, which would include the redoing the appraisals. So the appraisals would not be an additional fee on top of that.
Okay, so everybody understand the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Davis. And before we go to public input, just a clarification. I think if this passes and it goes to the TDC, this would come from the capital fund. Special projects are, are more for, well, anyway, I'll leave it up to, I'll leave it up to the attorney. Has the, Madam Attorney, have you looked at if the board decides to go down this path? Is the TDC funding appropriate for this type of purchase?
I believe so long as the TDC makes the requisite legislative findings, then yes, it would be appropriate.
Okay, and it wouldn't make any difference if it came from the capital fund or the special projects?
No, sir. I believe that's just a designation that the TDC has used to.
Well, we do, it's the one cent for capital, as you know, only for that. So the special projects, what we've used the special projects fund for is for additional marketing when, when opportunities come up that is not in the budget. So I guess the, the TDC would then have to determine if this is marketing or if this is capital, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, can I clarify then? That I would, I would leave it up to the discretion of the TDC, which fund they, they would feel would be appropriate to, to fund this, this $100,000 request out of.
Okay, and can I play the devil's advocate real quick before we go to public input?
100%.
Okay, so if this does pass, you know, and it moves forward, if the TDC thinks that it, it doesn't meet their mission, how does that affect the overall project? Or, I don't want to call you out on this, are you gonna be willing to overrule the TDC and do it anyway?
I would hate to go down that road. You know, my hope is that, is that they will find that this is an appropriate use for that money. If the TDC does not, you know, then it's, then it's decision time. I would like, you know, we could make the decision up here to not go that route. And, and I don't really want to do that. I think it's, it's appropriate for, that board is put in place to consider these things. I'd like to have them have an open and honest discussion about it. I think it's a, it's a, it's a very good use of those funds, and I hope that they'll find.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that if this passes, when that comes forward, did I do an adequate and fair job of presenting it so that they know that, okay?
Yeah, I, I don't, don't bring forward a threat to the.
No, no, okay, okay, very good. Okay, so let's, let's do this, then. We have a motion and a second. I think everybody understands it. Let's go to public input, and then we'll let the commissioners debate this and see what they want to do. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to the motion on the floor? Again, I'll remind you, folks, if you come up, you can say anything you want, but we ask you not to be too redundant. In other words, you can say, yeah, we like it or no, we don't, or you can take the whole three minutes. It's up to you. Please fill out a green card. Please tell us your name when you come up. And I assume, is there anybody speaking for any recognized group on the clerk's list? Okay, so if not, then everybody will have three minutes. Okay? Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Jane Van den Berg. I just have a list of neighborhood parkland criteria. This is from a different county when they decide to whether they should purchase land for a park. So I'm just gonna briefly read it to you. The first thing, does it have broad community access? Yes. The Pirate's Cove is used a lot for community. There's all kinds of boaters that go down there, bicyclists, everything. Does it have proximity and connectedness? Yes. The site is adjacent to an existing park. Does it have natural features? Yes. The site is very native to our natural coastline. Does it have cultural features? Sites that protect historical or archaeological resources, but we know it is definitely a resource as far as natural, naturally. Is it compatible with the community needs? Yes. Sites that provide public benefits such as neighborhood play areas, nature-based recreation? Yes. Water access, of course. Location. Site that fills a community need by enhancing the distribution of existing accessible public lands. So to me, that land meets all those criteria. And I did send this list to you, Mr. Kitchen, in an email.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Leland Ship, Floral City. I just want to just remind the board of when we got into some business with another organization, that that didn't end too well, Oak Village HOA. And I just cautioned in this vote that we may not want to go down that road. The other thing is, I understand, we don't know if this is gonna work or not, and, and I get that. But I just think that maybe sometimes we need to look back at our history and things we've done as the board and maybe reflect on some of those things that we've done. Maybe we should maybe address not going down those. And the other, other thing I would say is, you know, focusing on the right priorities. I think if we focused on road resurfacing, we could get those things done. If we focused on updating the comp plan, we could get those things done. If we looked at the permitting process in the county to make it easier for others to come here with their business and growth, we could get some things done with some interesting and new innovative ways of creating revenue for the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Hello. My name is Barry Schwartz. I live in Ozella. And Pirate's Cove generates an incredible amount of public use. And because I live about three houses down from the area, I see it every day. And I can also tell you that 99% of that use is not from people who live in Ozella. It's from people throughout the entire county and even the state of Florida and, and other places. This issue, as you know, has been in front of the board for 10 years plus. I've been coming here for at least 10 years talking about Pirate's Cove. You also know, if you've looked at the map of the state of Florida, that old Florida waterfront is disappearing at an incredible rate. And it's kind of a treasure that I hope we want to preserve, not only for us, but for future generations. My last point is, why are so many of us from Ozella here? We don't even use that park. The reason why we're here is, we see it every day. We realize what a treasure it is, and we think this is the right thing to do to preserve it for the next generation. We have an opportunity right now, because of what's in front of us with the sale of that property, to get creative and add this property to the existing parks. I strongly support us getting creative and do something with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have the next speaker, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Commissioners, it's nice to see you. I have a couple of things to tell you about myself. My name's Lorena Evans. I am an avid kayaker. I am actually the admin of the Florida Kayaker Community on Facebook. And so I have a great love for non-motorized things. Couple of things that, like Barry mentioned, we see a lot of non-Ozellians out there. I see a lot of people from the Crystal River area, Floral City and things, and it is a well-used, well-loved park. and it is a well-used, well-loved park. Someone said something about the roads need attention and these other things, and that's true. I absolutely agree that we need this road resurfacing. But that doesn't preclude being able to enhance what we already have. We have a park there, but this pristine bit of property can make a magnificent passive park. I have a note on here, one time I was coming back from kayaking out there, and I saw an older couple wearing their mask, this was about a year ago, sitting in chairs, reading the paper. They don't even live out there, but it's quiet. It's not like Kings Bay Park. It's not like any other park. None of them have direct golf access, that I can get in my kayak and be in the Gulf of Mexico. No other creatures around, no other buildings, no high rises. It's pretty magnificent. Natural areas like this that are open and owned by the public are, are rare, and we need to treasure them. And I would ask that you would help us make this a jewel that can last for the rest of the people of Citrus County forever. Thanks.
Thank you. We have the next speaker, please.
Cecilia Tredo Zella. The last several weeks, I have spent many hours of time thinking about this. And when I go on Ozella Trail after being Crystal River and I come home, there is a sigh for me when I see all that land that has been preserved, St. Martin's Preserve. And I think to myself, thank goodness and thank God that there were leaders that had the vision to do that, so that I can enjoy that today. That is what we have the opportunity to do right now, is to preserve a little piece of Florida that you're never going to find again and preserve it for future generations. And I agree also with this gentleman that talked about there were a lot of things that we need to do in Crystal River, a lot of things that need to be done in Citrus County. But the one thing we can never, ever, ever get back is land. And this place is a place where so many people come. We always talk about the tourist development, how, what a great job they've done. They've done a fabulous job. Because in the last week, I've gone to that ramp and talked to people. There's not a one person from Ozella there. They're all from Ca- they're not Canada, Michigan. Michigan is a big place. People come here from Michigan. They come there because it is old Florida, it's not a city, and they can enjoy the beauty of it. Let's preserve it for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Mary Whitehead. I also live in Ozella. Most of the Ozellians who have spoken have pretty much taken some of the words that I would have used. And I do thank you for your consideration in thinking about this.
Oops, my apologies.
Okay.
I just started.
Everybody started new jobs today, so it's a while to get, get used to.
I was doing so well there, and then suddenly it just got off kilter.
We're sorry, we're sorry. Please get to it. Please get to it.
But one comment that someone previously made is that there were some 900 people moving into the state of Florida every day. That could be true, I don't know. But the people who are using the parks, the visitors, they are not coming here because of the taxes. They are coming here because of the parks, because of the recreation. And we see that all the time. In fact, we love to go down to Pirate's Cove Park and just talk to whoever's there and find out where they're from and why they're there. And lots of them are going to PEX, but that's besides the point. The roads are also very important to the people in this county. But the roads will probably need to be done every, I don't know, 10, 15 years. And if we get those roads done now, in 15 or 20 years, they're going to have to be done again. But this is the golden opportunity for that park. Once this is gone, in 15 or 20 years, it is not going to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Richard Beller, and I'm the longest-lived resident on that island. I, I've been over, been there like 25 years, and I've owned a house another 10 beyond that. And I can see the park. But, but people don't realize, we live in the finest flat water kayaking in the entire United States. You cannot name one place in the United States where it's as good. And the, and Ozella is where it's at. You have two parks, one on John Row Road and our road, that you can launch a kayak. And that park is needed, and it brings a lot of money into this county, like they said. Like you talk to people over there, there are people from all over the country. When we advertise to get people to come down here, what do we have? Scaloping, manatees, fishing, and kayaking. Well, with the boating, with the fishing. But just think about that, the money that brings in. We need, oh, and that is also one of the best parks to launch to go scalping. So we need it, you know, and we need it bigger, because there's not enough parking now. And if, if you let it go, it'll be gone forever. So I just thought I'd want to tell you that.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Sabrina Watson-Lacanto. I know I spoke on this earlier, but I'm going to bring it up again. I spend three days a week in the Homasasa River. And commissioners didn't support spending money on a park there. As one speaker mentioned, pristine and passive. That was supposed to be the park at Homasasa as well, but we didn't get it. They had to go buy it on their own. And now we're talking about a park in Ozella. Well, there is actually an existing park in Ozella. We just want to expand the park in Ozella. So the questions is, questions that I would ask this commissioner are, what are the differences between those parks? Why a park in Homasasa will you not purchase, but we're going to expand a park in Ozella? What are the maintenance costs for that park? Are we going to add trails and benches and fishing piers and picnic tables? And are we going to mow and rake and spray and whatever the case may be? This looks like another piece of property to me that somebody can't sell. So we're going to sell it to the county, as one of our commissioners previously stated. It seems to be something that happens around here a lot. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Kurt Stoner. We live at the end of Sand Dollar. And I think this is a great project, but I would like to see if there's a way that you can put into this whole motion that this can never be sold for development.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Could you fill out a green card for us, sir, if you don't mind? The clerk has it. Yes, ma'am, please come on up.
My name's Nancy Taylor, and I do live in the land of Oz. And one of the things about the road issue is that every time you drive down that road, sometimes you curse and say, why didn't they fill this hole or fill that hole? But there's a point where you don't think anything about the road. The trip out there was just so beautiful. Like she said, when she leaves Crystal River and you get on that road, you don't think of anything else but the beauty of that road. And that road ends at Pirate's Point, we call it Pirate's Point, Pirate's Cove. I am a person from Oz that uses that park. A lot of people don't, but I do. Before my injury, I bicycled there, I kayaked there. You know, I was just so happy to go there. The first time I ever went there, I was like, this is amazing. I've lived here, I've lived in Florida 42 years and never seen anything like that. And I lived on my sailboat for 10 years, you know, traveled both coasts, anchored out everywhere, traveled by car, motorcycle, RV. Never have ever come across that area, this area of Oz. I call it Oz because I feel like the Wizard lives there. It's an amazing place. Feel very fortunate to live there. And like everybody else, giving that up, that opportunity, is just, it would just be terrible. Just a tragedy, because it is beautiful. I go down there and I, I do my artwork. We take our little dog down there for walks. I sit down there on a picnic bench, just to talk to the next person that comes along. I love to talk to people, I like to meet new people. I was just down there the other day, and I met a lady from Connecticut. She was here to visit her family. It is a beautiful place, and I hope that you preserve it and we don't lose it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this motion? Anyone else? Okay, we see no more public input. We have a motion and a second. We've heard from the public. Now we'll have the commissioners' discussion. Commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Carnard?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm going to jump right out here. And, you know, I do agree with one of the comments made by the public that we didn't do this in Homasasa. What we did is help them go to Tallahassee and get a grant to buy this. If I'm not mistaken, when this was presented to the board, it was presented that, let's go ahead and get the appraisals. We made an offer, they rejected the offer. But if we got the appraisals, there was ways that we could go to Tallahassee and get funding. There was different methods that we could get funding to buy this park. I'm not going to spend taxpayers' money, okay? It's called prioritize, okay? And at the last meeting, we sat up here and we talked about how much money we needed to pave roads and how much money we needed to, for other things, okay? We're doing a study right now. Just Ozella Trail is going to be in the millions of dollars to get it upgraded. We don't have a money tree out there to keep pulling off of. So I am all in support to go to Tallahassee to look at ways to, to pay for this. And we have a very good group, you know, Governor DeSantis, he, he's buying property, and his staff is, is looking at, you know, waterways all up and down the coast. I don't have any issues with going to Tallahassee and lobbying. I've got, we all have good connections up there. But it's called prioritizing. You must prioritize what you want and how you're going to get there. And then at the last board meeting, what I heard is $10 million is going to take. So if we're going to get to $10 million, we got to stop spending 375,000, 400,000. As far as I'm concerned, that Duke money should go towards road repaving. So again, I, I am all in favor. We got the appraisals. It was, it was cast upon us that if we get the appraisals, there was ways to pay for it in Tallahassee. So I'm all for that. I will go to Tallahassee and I will walk the halls, like I've done many times. But as far as spending taxpayers' money, prioritizing, we have to keep in mind. And that's not where I would spend the money here today, so I will not support the motion.
Anything, anything else?
Thank you. I'm done.
Yes, Commissioner Carnard.
Yeah, I, I was going to comment on, on some of the public input, but I'll, I'll answer Commissioner Carnahan's comments first. And that is that he knows, many of the public do not know, but he knows very well, the only part of this that I have suggested be used for funding is the 85,000 from Duke's special, special projects fund. That is the only money that could ever be used for roads. That's the only part of it. The park impact fees cannot ever, ever, ever be used for repaving roads. The TDC money, those funds, should the TDC approve this? We can't take money from the TDC and repave roads or repair roads or do any of that. So right off the top, there is $270,000 out of my requested, what, 375? Or no, it was 190, I forget what the numbers are up here. But anyway, the, the, the two of the three sources of funds can never be used for roads. So this, that shouldn't even be part of this discussion. We will get there on roads. We've got to make some tough decisions. But you can't take it from parks, and you can't take, you can't take it from park impact fees, and you can't take it from the TDC. The, the little bit of money that I'm requesting from the Duke funds, that money, we've had this conversation many times. Is that road resurfacing is an annual thing that has to be done. That is, that has to be funded from a, a source that is going to be there year after year after year. This board has, has said and took the position that the Duke's special projects fund were for one-time purchases, so that we weren't going to have, we weren't going to become dependent on those funds to take care of ongoing annual expenses. That's why it's called the Duke's special funds, or Duke's special projects fund. So anyway, hopefully, whether this, whether this passes or not, I hope everybody can be perfectly clear that this has absolutely zero effect on road resurfacing in Citrus County. It has nothing to do with it. It's muddy in the waters, and I wish that, that that had been cleared up long ago. I thought that it had, but I wish that, hopefully, it's clear now. Let's see, Mr. Ship, he talked about all the things that need to be done. He's absolutely correct, but these funds can't be used for that. If we took the, the 85,000 from the Duke's special projects fund and moved that over into the general fund, we would have $85,000 additional in the general fund that could be used for those things. That's it. The TDC money can't be used for that, and park impact fees can't be used for any of those things that he listed. I appreciate him being here and the input that he's given on a number of issues today, but they can't be used for those things. The others, let's see, lots of support for it. That's what I like to see. Thank you. And Mrs. Watson is absolutely correct. We just want to expand a park in Ozella. That's what we're wanting to do with this money. That's why we collect park impact fees, is to expand capacity of our parks. That, that is for, the people in the audience and who are watching at home, impact fees can only be used for capacity expansion. That is it. That's what, that's why we collect them. They can't be used for maintenance. It's for expanding capacity.
What I'm going to do, give everybody a chance to talk. Then we can do a second round if we need to. And then I'm going to give Commissioner Carnard the last word, or maybe the next still last. Okay, Commissioner Davis?
My speech just got a lot shorter because you just made most of it. Thank you for that.
Well, thank you.
I was going to point out, impact fees are only, you've already said it capably, so I'm not going to say it again, can't be used for roads. I will say, I'm going to get incoming for everybody who's from the land of Oz. I'm going to get a little poetic, because I was particularly moved by Ms. Taylor, Ms. Evans, and Mr. Beller. Ms. Taylor, you're absolutely right. This is a place unlike anything else. And go ahead, you can throw up in your mouth a little bit. I'm going to say it. I have danced with dolphins at dawn out there in a kayak, and it is flipping amazing. There is no other place like that on earth. And as we expand rooftops and we have more people and we have more tourism and more success, we do need park expansion, so I am going to be in favor of this. Now let's talk about funding. The only reason that I am easily in favor of it is because of the funding that you have outlined. I do have one, I want to give a nod to Commissioner Carnahan about priorities, because I know he has his eye on ball fields with park impact fees. How much of the 190,000 are gated to just use in District One?
190,000?
I thought that would probably be the answer, because I know how much is in my gated fund. So then that answers that, and TDC, I think, is a great fit. And Duke's special projects, I was a little squishy about that, except I'm glad you reminded me that we are not working, we're not going to use that for ongoing things. Those are only for special projects, so I'm kind of okay with that, but I'm definitely okay with the other two, so I'll be in favor of this.
Great, thank you.
Are you done? Are you done?
Yes, Ms. First-Dress Chair.
I just want to say, for this brief moment, I'm the acting chair, so I just want to say. What I was going to ask you, the 190, is that the complete, that's the full amount that you have right now in park fees, impact fees?
Yes, for District One.
Okay, and then how, how sure are you that your TDC will be receptive to this?
It's, I don't know. All, all that I'm asking is, is that we put it on their agenda and ask them, ask them to consider it. I think it's a great use of TDC funds. And I think it's a great project that ultimately, when the, when the private world shows up with donations to, to complete this purchase, I think it's a, it is a great project that, that the TDC will be able to hang their hat on as well and say, we, we helped with this project.
Thank you.
Is everyone speak to this?
I'm, it's on the floor. Thank you. So I, I have to tell you, I'm, I'm so in the middle. And the reason why, Chair, is because I really think that this is a perfect case of conservation. And I don't know that we've even tried to go to Tallahassee and try to address that. Because as a native-born Floridian, we are not making any more dirt. And I know... And I know that this, I'm so in the middle and I can't, I have to, I'm trying to separate because I don't know if this is a rush to do this, I support it, but I would like to see conservation money. Because, so that's all I have.
Great.
Can I answer the question?
Well, why don't we do this, I'm gonna give you the last words. Make a list of all these, because you haven't heard mine yet, you're gonna want to respond to mine too. So, and so, we give everybody, I want to say a couple of things, everybody's had a chance to do it. We'll do a second pass for anybody else and then we'll give Commissioner Carnard the landing strip here to see where we go with this. A couple of points I just want to make, I mean, my position on this has been pretty clear. You know, let's start with conservation, more than fifty percent of Citrus County is owned by the state, federal or local government. So there's your conservation, we have done a great job conserving it. So, I've also been told if we developed every piece of property in Citrus County, the population could only double, which means we'd go at what, three hundred thousand? So I don't see us being overrun. There were some excellent points made on both sides, the direct access to the Gulf's a great point. But the two big sticking points with me, and I do appreciate Commissioner Carnard coming back with a lower price. I mean, that was great to see that, but it's still, it's the concept is that, the gentleman made the point about Oak Village. We know what our experience has been with private-public partnerships, I don't think we want to go down that road again, I don't. The Homo Sassa Park, we told all those people, Rodney McCray, all those people down there that worked for years, no, 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 no. And now we're gonna turn around and say yes to another group, I think that's wrong. That's just as pristine setting on the waterfront in Homo Sassa. And I remember I called Representative Masulo, he came down that night, I explained to him the project, we had dinner. And he went back and him and some, actually, it was actually Senator Dean at the time that started it and then it went to Senator Simpson who moved it forward, and we got that done. And from the very beginning, I said, I'll help you, but I'm not supporting putting one dollar of taxpayer dollars into it. And so I have to take the same position on this, is that for all those reasons, I mean, there's a lot of pristine land out there that we could buy up, but that takes it off the tax rolls. And I gotta tell you, probably fifty percent of the comments I got about people that wanted us not to do universal trash also said, and don't buy that park. So I mean, that was a tag on as well. So if we listen to people about one thing, you know, there's gotta be a line where we start listening to folks on it. And I appreciate the people in Ozella, but I also appreciate the people that have been on Commissioner Schleba about Beverly Hills. And she would like to see some money spent on parks up there. And I would, same thing, it'd be great if they all want to get together and do it. But I've never supported funding a pool up there, if they want to build one and buy one and operate it, great. And it doesn't address the maintenance costs, which we all know, building something is the smallest price and buying it, it's the maintenance thereafter. So, again, I think it's a worthy project for all the reasons listed, my problem is with the funding. So that's why I supported the appraisal, we did that in Homo Sassa, that's why, you know, I supported even the title search, we need to do that. That's what we did in Homo Sassa, but on this particular issue, that's where my support would have to end. So, and I know you made some notes, so ready to go second round, Commissioner?
You hit the nail on the head, we didn't do this for Homo Sassa, but we helped Homo Sassa. We didn't spend any impact fee money, we didn't spend any Duke money, we didn't spend any money on Homo Sassa at all. But yet here, we're going to flip around and pretty much tell them, float down the river, but we're gonna do it over here, okay? And again, when this was brought forward to us, it was sold on, let's get the appraisals. Once we get the appraisals and we know what it's, how much it's going to be, then we can go to Tallahassee and try to get some money from them to buy this property. And that hasn't even been done. And that's more concerning, you know, to me. But again, I agree with, you know, know the property well. I remember when Parks Cove there ate there all the time, okay? That property, since I think, I believe the No Name storm is when that property crumbled, okay? It's been vacant since then. No one has come out of the works to buy it. The gentleman that owned it tried to bring a couple of projects in there that didn't fit the area and the boards at those times voted it down. So we're not in a hurry, it's not going anywhere, okay? And if it does, if somebody does come in to buy it, okay. But it's not gonna be a commercial piece of property, it could be a house or something to that nature. But what I would like this board to do, because it was sold to us, that if we got the appraisals, then we would go look for conservation money at the state level to buy this piece of property. Again, I'm with Commissioner Kitchen, I'm not spending any money on this, taxpayers' money in Citrus County on this. We didn't do it for Homo Sassa, I'm not doing it for Ozella. But again, I will go to Tallahassee with you, stand right next to you, I will take you from Senator to House Rep. I know, we all know a tremendous amount of them and we will lobby them to get conservative money to buy this piece of project or buy this piece of property. But again, when it comes to taxpayers' money, I'm not spending any in Citrus County because we didn't do it for others and it's not fair to do one and not for the other. So with that being said, that's where I'm at.
Are you, is that your comments, because this will be the last bite at the apple for everybody.
Again, you know, what I remember as sitting in your chair is, when this is brought forward, let's spend the money to get the appraisals. Once I know what the property is appraised at, then we can go to Tallahassee and we can work on getting money to buy the property, okay? And so that's what I remember, that's what I'm ready to do. You know, I'll put my walking shoes on and get busy with it, but, and do just the same as we did for the Homo Sassa group. I'm done.
Okay, Commissioner Schleba?
Well, all due respect, I wasn't sitting on the board when Homo Sassa was told no and I probably would have said yes. So, that being said, I like the idea that I didn't know that it was quite fifty percent conservation, that we have protected water and land in Citrus County, but if we could make it fifty-one?
Fifty-one percent right now.
So fifty-two percent with this land, then I am for that. I, you know, don't know how much of a rush, I don't feel, I would like to take a beat and address Tallahassee and the conservation and that's where I stand. You know, I think that, I think we have a good chance of getting this money from Tallahassee. And I just was wondering why you aren't talking about that, Commissioner, so thank you.
That's it, okay, Commissioner Davis?
I would concur with Commissioner Schleba, different time, different situation, different board, just, this is what happens and I probably would have been in favor of it as well. Because I keep coming back to, the central tenet of impact fees are to expand parks, period, full stop. And if people in that district have come out so overwhelmingly in favor of having this park and it also checks the box of additional asset to market through the TDC for tourism, then it checks a lot of boxes. And finally, I would say, does it have to be mutually exclusive that we can be ready, willing and able to invest those funds which have been entrusted to us for expansion of parks? We can expend those funds if we don't get the money from conservation grants out of Tallahassee. I don't see where it's mutually exclusive, that we can try one while knowing that we can go to the back, so. And I, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Carnard, it's all yours.
All right, here we go. First of all, I'll talk about the amount of conservation in the county, the number that I have heard is forty-three percent is forever protected. I wasn't gonna bring it up because that's still a lot of our county that's protected, but that's the number, that's the number that I've heard is forty-three percent is set aside to never be developed, which is a great thing. The conservation money from Tallahassee, I did make those phone calls. And what I came up with was one organization suggested crowdsourced funding for it. Put up a Facebook page and see if you can get enough money to buy it, that route. Their organization was more interested in larger parcels of property, hundreds, thousands of acres, things like that. The other ones that called me back actually and suggested that they could muster up a couple thousand dollars, maybe three or four thousand dollars to help with the purchase. And they, you know, they knew that that wasn't a whole lot of help, but that's what they were willing to do for it. I contacted both of our legislators and asked them about getting help from Tallahassee for this. And I'm not going to name which one, but he did call me back, he listened to the whole story on what I was trying to accomplish. And his suggestion was that I reach out to private donors in the community and see if there was interest in helping the county to get there. And that if the county could put some money into it, perhaps you could get private funding to complete the purchase. And so that's what we're doing. I have reached out to some private individuals, I've had one particular individual contact me who I didn't call and say, keep me in the loop, I want to help you get this done. And I said, well, I've got an agenda coming up before the county commission to see if I can use funds from, see if the board will authorize using funds from these three sources. And if we're successful there, then I'm going to be needing the rest of this money to complete this purchase. It needs to go, the private funds, I understand the gentleman's concern about being involved with another nonprofit, but large donations like that, if they go to a nonprofit, they don't, these individuals didn't specify it, but if they go through a nonprofit, then it's a tax deduction for them, it's a write-off to them. The, let's see, what else did we have to address? Homo Sassa property versus Ozella property. The Homo Sassa property was owned, I believe it was Mr. Locklear that owned that property. I don't know, I don't know that he had that property listed and actively marketing it for sale at the time. He was approached by Rodney and the other folks from Homo Sassa about buying it. They negotiated a price between the two of them and I believe that Mr. Locklear agreed, I wasn't involved in the conversations, but I believe that he agreed to hold it off the market to give them time to line up the funding for it, okay? And so that's what they did and consequently, you know, because of the issues that they ran into along the way, different, you know, partial funding of it of, I think it was eight hundred fifty thousand, Tallahassee off. Senator Simpson got them from one avenue and they said, no, that's not gonna cut it. Then he said, well, we've got another avenue, we can go to get this thing funded. Mr. Locklear agreed to hold it off the market, still not list the property. And Senator Simpson got them that funding and they were able to purchase it before it was ever listed. This is a different piece of property, that was establishing a brand-new park. This is a different piece of property. This property, as everybody knows, the owner has passed away, his heirs now have the property and they're ready to get rid of it, they want to sell this thing, they've got it actively listed with a realtor. That is, that's the difference between these two. We're also expanding a park, we're not reaching out and grabbing a piece of property to create a new park. This is expanding capacity on an existing, on an existing park. And Commissioner Kitchen, you mentioned Beverly Hills parks, there are impact fees, as you well know, there are impact fees set aside for that district. And we've talked about a football field out there or different things. When, you know, when Commissioner Schleba or Commissioner Carnet, anybody brings forward an initiative to expand parks and use those park impact fees, I am all for spending them. I have said again that there's no reason for us to collect those if we're not gonna spend them to expand our parks. If we want, you know, if we're not gonna do that, then let's don't collect it. But if we are collecting it, I would rather it not be sitting in the county coffers. Let's expand the parks like we've told the people we're gonna do with that money. That's my last bite at the apple.
Very good, and to, as I promised you, you will have the last word, I won't, I won't step on your ending there. So, with that said, we have had a motion, the clerk understands the motion, the board understands it. Actually, the memorandum clearly says updating the appraisals and proceed with the purchase based as outlined. I want to tell you upfront, I won't be voting for this as I've already outlined and for the reasons why. But if it does pass, I will happily take your request to the TDC if that's the direction of the board and explain to them the situation.
Great, thank you.
So, with that said, let's make it clear for everybody, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on this, Madam Clerk. How are we doing, you all set to do that? Or did I spring that on you at the last minute here? Again, just in case the public doesn't know, when we do a roll call vote, it's standard procedure to have the motion, the first vote will be by the person that makes the motion, the second one will be by the person that's seconded the motion. Usually then the other folks vote and the chairman is called last. Are we in agreement on that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, all right, very good.
Commissioner Carnard?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schleba? Just stop, don't.
Just, yes or no?
No.
Vote no, okay.
And Commissioner Carnahan? And Chair?
Nay. So the motion is defeated three to two. Okay, thank you very much, folks, we, hopefully it won't be the end of it, hopefully you'll get some success in Tallahassee and be able to move forward with it. So, with that said, if you're leaving, if you're leaving us, please do so quietly, we still have business to conduct. Okay, let's see, let's go back to something non-controversial like the animal shelter, we'll go back to G3.
Okay, during the little break there we had, we had an opportunity to put our heads together, put the numbers on paper so everybody has the same thing.
Great, thank you very much, thank you.
The impact fees actually were in three years, so a little more in impact fees. If you start at the top, seven million five was what was originally set as the upper parameter for borrowing. There's been two seventeen-five-hundred miscellaneous land sales. There's three fifteen for the Robinson estate that you all designated earlier that would be applied to the debt. And then the next three totals are for impact fees for those three respective years, eight sixty-one, eight hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-one dollars. If you apply all those funds to that, that would make a net borrowing of a little over six point one million dollars. Again, we do not know the cost of this facility at this point because of the way construction prices are and they're fairly volatile.
So if I understand this, in G2, this is what you're telling us, that you want authorization to go out with the county's financial advisor and competitively bid this bond, is that correct?
Yes, the first thing stepped would be we'll come back with what's called a parameters ordinance that within certain parameters, we can do it, one of the parameters will be maximum bond amount.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Schleba, is this now what you understood that we discussed earlier?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Yes, yes ma'am, please do.
I'm sorry, may I? I just want to make sure that you guys understand that before when we were talking about this, we were only talking about the four forty-two, six fifteen because that was the last year of impact fees. But we talked it over and actually, there's the other two years, so that's why the numbers are different. And the Robinson estate, I think that's the only issue that you guys are still discussing is whether or not that needs to be subtracted or not.
Let's clarify that, the Robinson estate money, my understanding was it was going to build the shelter. Was that what everybody's understanding was or was that for extras after the shelter was built?
I believe it's to build the shelter.
Okay, so we're all on the same page with that?
No.
No, okay.
No, I never spoke on this earlier. I think that the most important person that we need to ask has unfortunately passed away. It is her money, it would be really nice to know what her intent was. But given all the giant number of donations that we've already gotten for this, my feeling, my sense is is that she was donating that to be, we've got public money, which is the bond, and other sources selling property and whatnot. And then we have citizen money that is for the extras. And so my feeling is, I thought we were voting it was going to the extras, capital, but the capital improvements that are the extras that weren't gonna be in the seven point five. That being said, I'm not gonna fall on my sword over three hundred thousand dollars and I don't think Commissioner Schleba indicated she would either, so, but I was very clear that I thought it was for extras. But you're absolutely right, we should have made it clear at the time.
Okay, so now, so now we're all on board that it would go to reducing the amount borrowed for the actual building of the shelter? for the actual building of the shelter. Yeah, go ahead, yes.
And, um, how I got to just going ahead and letting it go towards, I had the same thing, that this was private money going towards the donations. I had the same mindset, that's why I wanted to clear it up. Um, but either way, it's going towards the shelter and we haven't even scratched the surface. So I feel very comfortable with this and once, I think we're going to be sitting pretty good.
So I think what the administrator now is asking for on G two is this is the number that he's telling you he wants authority to go out and borrow. Okay? Uh, and you've heard concerns, is it enough? What if it's not? You, uh, the other comments have been, you feel confident that you can raise it if it's not enough. So the question before the board, is the administrator authorized to go out and, and borrow this amount of money?
Correct.
Is that what we're looking for, Mr., Mr.? Okay.
Yes.
I'm going to make the motion that we, uh, that we direct the administrator to bond, uh, six million one hundred and five, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Carnahan. Let me get, I got my paper all scratched up here, make sure I got it.
And also remember, um, you know, when we get that Betts Farm sold, that we're looking at about a, hopefully a big reduction here.
Okay, and, and that's the understanding, as I understand it, on that one exception, if we sell Betts Farm, we can buy down the principal with that.
That's the way we're structuring it.
Okay. Okay, well, believe it or not, based on that, well, let's hear from the public first and I'll tell you what I think about it. Is there anyone here, we have a motion, uh, basically to move forward with the borrowing of the six million one hundred and five thousand. Is there anybody here to speak on that motion? Yes, sir. Get your money's worth in today, you're here, yes, sir.
Yeah, all right. Leadership Floral City, I support your motion and I say y'all should do that. I think it's time that we put this baby to bed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else to speak on this motion?
Your administrator.
I see, okay, I won't do that, I won't wait for Commissioner Carnard to get back. Uh, Commissioner Carnard, we have a motion to borrow the six million one hundred and five, six thirty-nine. That was made by Commissioner Carnahan and seconded by Commissioner Slaybaugh. We're in discussion, we've heard from the public, Mr. Oliver.
Yeah, just wanted to mention thanks to Denise Lynn for helping put the spreadsheet together. She told me she was going to become a tax attorney.
Yeah, good, good. Good, good, you need to diversify there a little, yes, okay, yes. Okay, so, um, and everybody's understanding of this now, okay? So, um, so here's, here's what I was going to say. So we have the motion, go to board discussion. Uh, based on what you guys have done here, I will go ahead and vote to support this because there is a solid number in front of us. And what I'm hearing you say today is that's the max, that's the max that you would borrow. And the only thing that could happen from this point is that could go down. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Is everybody hearing the same, are you hearing the same thing, Mr. Oliver?
Yes, sir.
Want to make sure it's just not.
Plus the other land sales we got coming.
Right, well, he, he said we can't use that to buy down the principal.
That's right, but, okay.
But you, you know, we could maybe use that for then the extras or whatever, right? Okay, great. Okay, so there we are, now we're in discussion. We know what we're discussing, we know the motion. Is there any other board discussion on that item? Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, um, if that's the case, okay, let's, let's, let's have this discussion because the discussion before was we're going to take land sales, go towards the shelter. Okay, so now that we're going to go bond this money, so what we need to do is have another discussion, maybe not today, but if land sales are coming, then we need to, uh, maybe have, uh, uh, put it in other places. Um, as far as, wh- whatever we can do that with. I mean, because I do feel that we're going to be in good shape with the shelter. And, uh, so with that, you know, I, I do think if we can't put any more land sales besides Betts Farm towards the shelter, then we need to look at maybe, uh, putting those sales somewhere else.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Slaybaugh, any other comments on the motion?
Um, I'm just thinking that this is very, very exciting for me. And especially, I never heard a number for Betts. And if that does happen, that it makes this number even more exciting. But we also, um, need to, I don't want to take away the additional land sales, the future land sales, because we might have a ton, twenty percent increase just in building supplies that we have to think about. So I'm just going to throw that out there.
Well, again, just so we're not mixing things up here, we, we were told that the land sales would go towards this. And again, this is what I remember, land sales would go towards this until it came time to borrow money. Because that was going to reduce what we needed to borrow. What I'm hearing in front of us now is this amount can only be reduced by the sale of the Betts Farm.
Correct.
So any other money from land sales that come in could not be reused to be reducing the mon- money borrowed. Okay, so just so we're clear on that. And I think what Commissioner Carnahan is saying, so if we can't do that, then we need to talk about using those land sales for some other perhaps capital purpose, perhaps trails, perhaps.
Right.
Parks, who knows?
Yeah, put it in some kind of special projects fund.
Go, go ahead.
Um, I, I would, I would suggest that it go into, uh, when, and this needs to be an agenda item for us to talk about, but I would suggest that go into some type of a special projects fund, one-time purchases because it's a one-time sale of the property.
Right, I agree.
Not ongoing operating costs.
Commissioner Carnahan, you'll put that on a future agenda?
I will, definitely, sure will. And I agree, I agree with that comment. I mean, uh, you know, we, we definitely got, uh, you know, a good two hundred something thousand that we could put towards this, plus the Betts Farm sale. And I think that was a smart move, but I think we need to have another discussion then on pre- on future sales.
Okay, so who would have thought you got Commissioner Carnahan to make the motion to do this?
I know, it's, it's like Christmas.
Commissioner Davis, any other comments?
No, sir.
On the motion? Commissioner Slaybaugh, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, so on the motion to, uh, as I understand, it's authorize staff to work, the county financial advisor to competitively bid, bank placement to finance, the new animal shelter not to, and within the parameters, and I read debt as a not to exceed six million one hundred and five, three, six thirty-nine, which is what Commissioner Carnahan said, right? Okay, that said, all in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed, say nay? And it passes unanimously. Whoever thought you would sue the day for that, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, all right, let's see. So now, let's move on to, uh, oh, we're wrapping this up close. Mr. Oliver, item G three.
Yes, uh, Florida statute, uh, one twenty-five point three seven nine states that every three years, each county is required to prepare an inventory list of all real property to which the county holds a fee simple title that's appropriate for affordable housing. In the past, the properties were placed on the inventory list and either transferred to the qualified home builders or proceeds of the sale were earmarked for the local housing trust fund. And we are approaching the three-year cycle. And, uh, what we're asking is, uh, uh, we're saying we're going to, uh, categorize the properties into those categories and, uh, uh, we've given you the backup for that.
Okay, so you see the, what they're looking for there to approve and authorize the staff to, uh, one, two, three, and four. What is?
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion that we approve item, where are we at, G?
G three.
Three.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one, two, three, and four.
Second.
Okay, so thank you, Commissioner Carnard and Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on this motion? Okay, commissioners, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed, say nay? And that passes unanimously. Mr. Oliver, you got one more item on there?
Yes, uh, G four is the annual, it's been helpful for a number of years. Uh, the elected leadership summit Veronica's been coordinating with our counterparts in the two cities and the school board. Uh, they, they have, uh, reserved that date. Uh, we don't know the participation by the individual members, that will, they'll have to work that out. Uh, but we are asking you to direct staff to schedule and coordinate the community elected leadership summit for January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two from nine till three at the Lacano Government Building, room one sixty-six. Uh, B, approved use of purchasing card to purchase food and supplies for the January twenty-eighth meeting. And, uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, community summit not to exceed five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Uh, commissioners, here's something that I, I want to bring up quickly. Is this our seventh year of doing this now? I believe we've been doing it for seven years. Um, and, and as all things, it starts off one way, kind of more, I would like to, my input on this would be I'd like to see us bring it back to what it originally was. And by the way, this is the same room we used last year, right? So we all met there last year. Uh, what I would like us to do, and no slight against anybody, but this was set up as an elected leadership summit. And what has happened, I think, over the past few years has been there's been more and more staff from all the entities sitting around the table, which is not why it was set up. It was set up to, so the elected leaders could sit and talk face to face. So what I'd like to just ask is that, that, that each entity, each governmental entity invites all the staff they want, they just sit behind them. And only the elected leaders have a place at the table. Does anybody have a problem with that? Knowing that if our staff or their staff are there and they have something to add, obviously they'll be able to do that. But I would rather that input come through the elected leaders than having just, because staff can get together anytime and talk. We don't need to meet, you know, to do that, to listen to staff. So what, what's your feeling on that?
Well, I, I think that's a great idea. Matter of fact, I, I mean, usually we have the, our attorney and our administrator there, but other than that, I don't think we need any of our staff there. I mean, uh, you know, I mean, I don't, we've never had that before, but, uh, no, I agree a hundred, a hundred percent with that.
Okay, any?
I, I cannot make this meeting.
Oh, okay. Well, you can't make everything, nobody can make everything, that's, I mean, so. Any comments?
No, sir.
Okay, did you have a different date that you wanted to propose? I mean, we just have to get all the other groups to go up.
Yeah, I figured that they already did their due diligence and, and I just have something with work for a year planned and I.
That, that's okay. There's, a lot of us haven't made, missed them in the past, you know, so not everybody can be at every single thing, so. Maybe you can put it together, a list, and send it in with, uh, Mr. Oliver to make sure that your thoughts.
It's the only date I'm not available.
Other commissioners, any other points? Anything else? Good with everything? No objection? So what we'll do is we'll just put, we'll put seating cards at the table for the elected folks and then invite the staff to come to be support for their, for their groups, okay? So the administrator's looking for a motion, basically to go ahead and coordinate the meeting and to approve up to five hundred dollars. Usually we buy like spaghetti or something like that for everybody, right?
Chair?
Yes.
May I have approval of G four A and B?
Okay, Commissioner Davis makes the motion, seconded by Commissioner Carnard. Is any public comment? Commissioners, any other discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed, say nay? That passes unanimously. So let's see, we have completed all the H, H items, so that takes us up to I. Advisory Board Announcements, do we just need to announce these terms?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you want to do that? You want me to do that or how you want to do it?
I can do that.
Okay, you go right ahead. I one.
Yes, announce terms of membership available and the taking of applications for the following positions on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Please note that they have to be in these categories. Uh, one real estate professional, one low-income advocate, one local planning agency rep, one not-for-profit provider of affordable housing representative, uh, one citizen of a local jurisdiction, and one for a nonprofit provider of affordable housing. The new terms will be for two years, beginning February first, twenty twenty-two and ending on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, application and resumes, uh, requested by, uh, December seventeenth.
So we're all good on that? Everybody's clear with that? I, I would mention, we're not appointing anybody here, but I think we're a little behind schedule on the TDC. My understanding is we have three, maybe more, members expiring in January and we haven't even advertised for those expirations, so we might find out what's going on over there because I'd hate to wait until the day before and then be, you know, down to three folks. So maybe we can follow up on that.
I will.
Thank you. Uh, no other advisory board things? Let's go, committee reports from commissioners. Uh, Commissioner Carnahan, you got anything down there?
No, but we're all good, no sir.
Okay, Commissioner Slaybaugh?
Yes, um, I gotta go to my calendar, I don't have a memory like you, um.
I just remember what my wife tells me to remember now.
I had the public safety coordinating meeting, um, and it was the first one I was able to make this year, which is, and it was very enlightening. I, um, I learned a lot. I think that there is a concern about how long we are having to hold on to inmates here while we're waiting for them to go to the prison system, which, um, I know that Randy is working on that to make sure that we could get some kind of compensation for that. And that is just one thing that I wanted to talk to you about and see where we were at. Um, I'd also, uh, Judge Howard brought this up, that he wants to see probation there and hopefully that, that we can make that happen. And, and I was asked if anybody from the state's attorney's office was there and I, okay, so that might be something else. And I, other than that, I, you know, I had my, uh, um, transportation disadvantaged board and, um, that is another board that I thoroughly enjoy and, um, going to be taking a bus ride, uh, in December, doing the whole routes.
All right, guys, sit in for once on what is me, and I've did in the past, and they're very, very informed and fascinating.
Fascinating.
Yes, they are.
Commissioner Davis, any committees?
Yes, um, I went to Florida Association of Counties two weeks ago and, um, I sat on the, um, urban, and it's a lot of words, urban and community affairs committee, something like that. And, um, they gave us an assignment a few months ago for things to put forward for legislative priorities for Tallahassee. And even being a freshman, I went, okay, I'll take this way to get that, and I did. And darned if it didn't actually get approved by everybody and it's going forward to Tallahassee. So I felt pretty good that I didn't make a complete fool of myself. And, um, at the prior, I forgot to mention at the prior meeting, the Florida Chamber gave Prosperity Citrus a pretty, a major award. I think they gave seven or eight chair awards out and Prosperity Citrus got one of them, which was a really big deal. Um, so I think we're going to start helping our first, um, residents that need, uh, coaching. It's not money, it's coaching, um, by March, one year after starting. That's basically why they gave the award is that we moved really fast, so, good stuff.
Good, good. Anything else? That's it?
Nope, sorry.
Committee reports, Commissioner Carnard?
Yes, the, uh, the MPO, the big news there and it's already, it's already been broadcast, was that, uh, DOT showed up and told us that, uh, continuation of the Suncoast Parkway, um, had been funded for planning and construction to four ninety-five. Uh, planning will begin in twenty-two, um, or design, I guess. Uh, and then design for four ninety-five to nineteen had been funded, construction had not. Uh, also, it's also been broadcast that, um, uh, the light at four ninety-one and two hundred, uh, the, the timbers and cable there that are holding the lights are temporary because the mast arms still cannot be acquired by the contractor. But once they are, then a more permanent fixture will be there.
I heard those are made individually, per order, that's why it takes so long to, long to do that, so.
Can I tell you, I was.
Two years, two years now, they've been, uh, uh, they've been having issues with getting these mast arms.
And I, and I got to say that I found it just fascinating because I know, talk about memory. I swear it was twenty, twenty-five years ago when the original concept for the park was laid out, there was an intersection at four ninety-five. And I always kept asking people, is there still an intersection at four ninety-five? Because it was on the original plans. Uh, Commissioner Carnard?
I went over yesterday, looked at the, I mean, yeah, it, it, it looks good and, uh, seems to be, you know, they got, uh, big signs out letting everybody know they're there, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's, that's going to work well until we get what we need.
Okay, very good. And if you notice today, the commissioner comments sections are laid out by district since we didn't know who was going to be what. So, uh, we're going to just go to District Five with Commissioner Davis. Uh, anything else to add?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Carnard, you had one item on there, you got anything else you want to jump on today? Okay, all righty, we took care of that. All right, uh, Commissioner Slaybaugh, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Carnahan?
Uh, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I, I just want to say, uh, just take a second, thank you guys again. Uh, my goal, uh, and again, it's a great honor to be selected to be your chair this year. As I always say, um, uh, I can only do what you allow me to do and in the past I've been given great latitude to do that. And I'm going to do the same, I'm going to be, try to do everything I can to be impartial, obviously, you know, defend my position and debate it, but to give everything a clear and fair hearing, give everybody time to talk. And my goal this whole year is just to give, uh, my fellow commissioners a calm and, uh, is, you know, what do they say? Civil platform to conduct our business. That, that'll be my goal. So, uh, we're going to continue in that and, uh, and, and I know we will be successful. Uh, I'm very happy, and of course the day's not over, and I make a mistake in saying this sometimes, but I'm very happy with the way today has gone and, uh, some have lost some, some have won some, and overall, we're still moving forward. So, uh, in my commission, uh, committee reports, I just want to mention a couple of things. One is, um, we, uh, the TDC meets next week, I believe, yes. One is, we, TDC meets next week, I believe, yes, today's Tuesday, yeah, we meet next week. And also the TBRPC meets next week. Next week will be my last TDC meeting because I believe we're gonna do the committee assignments, the first, the only meeting in December. And as you all know, I've told the TDC I won't be returning there, we're gonna have a different commissioner doing that. Dealing with the committee assignments, I've asked Mr. Oliver to reach out to all of you and find out what your preferences are to try to meet your preferences as much as possible, okay? So that'll be our goal when we deal with that next time. And so that, that's really all I had and I want to say, but I have, they have asked me to stay on for another year down here because I offered to do the same thing. And it's not that they don't like you, but they know me and they want me to stay another year at the TBRPC, so I, I told them I'd be coming back down there. Madam Attorney, you got anything for us today?
I have nothing, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much for your calm and patient demeanor, as you always have. Mr. Oliver, you got anything to wrap us up with today?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Back to, open to the public, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the boards this time?
Commissioners, my name is Phil Hunter.
Is your microphone on, sir?
I see a red light and a blue light.
Is this? Okay. Thank you.
Once again, I'm new to Citrus, but I read that the FDOT is going to have a meeting the end of next week to discuss the potential extension of the turnpike. And I looked at their website, I saw four routes, two of the routes skirt our county, two of the routes go right between Citrus Springs and Pine Ridge. I live in Pine Ridge, by the way. I also read, and it may not be accurate, but that the other counties involved in, in the northern routes are not in favor of that, they are opposed to it. You, you may know better than I, but what I, I don't know is what this commission feels about the two routes that go right through the middle of our county. So if it's appropriate and if, if now is the right time, I, I'd love to hear what this commission thinks about that, that route for a turnpike extension. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this time? Okay, so we'll close public comment. Anyone wanna talk about the parkway? I mean, I guess we can speak to what our adopted position has been. We, I think most of the discussion we've had to this point in time has been about the Suncoast and the continuation of the Suncoast. Has anybody heard anything that we, we know, wanna share? I mean, what do we, Mr. Oliver, do we have an established county position on the extension of the turnpike?
This just came up the last two weeks.
That's what I'm saying, I thought it was kinda news to me as well, too, so, yes ma'am.
I would, we're talking about the turnpike. What concerns me with the turnpike is one of the routes is being pushed and I feel like it's, and from, it's being pushed towards our area from an area that has a very deep pockets. And it concerns me because the one route is environmentally, I think it's very sensitive and, and it's not a wealthy area and I'm very concerned about that. And that is notoriously what happens in the, most states, but in, I've watched it in Florida, that the more vulnerable areas get plowed through and I don't consider Pine Ridge a vulnerable area, but it, I don't like that anyway, that route. But I, so it's something that is concerning me, I have been thinking about it and I am, I am curious to see what everybody else's thoughts and what, what we will put forward.
You're done.
Seriously? I'm so sorry. He was so, he was so short on what he said, so my apologies. It's been a long day.
So I think that's, you know, I'm just curious, what, what we, what is our next step? How do we address this? How do we get in front of it and, and not, and be protective of our area?
Mr. Carnahan?
Yeah, I'll jump out there. I mean, I sat on both of the, you know, the, the task force there and Marion County's definitely against it. I mean, they spoke up heavily, they don't want it. Make note, rest assured, they want a connecting point for the Suncoast Parkway and the turnpike, okay? That was at once up at Lebanon Station, which would be north. Since the parkway is going to go to nineteen, you can bet the connection's going to be probably at Citrus County. I, I'm just thinking where they're gonna try to push it, you know, I, I have no idea where it's going to go, but they, they definitely want those two roads to, to meet, so you can get on one and go to the east or you can get on one and go, you know, north and south, so they definitely want those roads meeting at some point, so where that's gonna happen, I, I can't tell you that, but there was some very heavy discussion on that.
Any comments down this way? I mean, I guess at some point in time, we're gonna be asked for a rebuttal, are we not? I mean, yeah.
Oh, there's, there's no doubt, I'm just, go ahead, I'm, I'm just waiting to see what the meeting comes out of and, you know, see where this thing moves forward to.
My suggestion, if you'd like, we can either do it at the meeting in December, if you feel like you need a little more time, we can do it in January, is just all prepare an agenda item and give you a map of what their four proposed routes are so you can discuss it and know what they are.
Well.
My concern with this is remember what happened last time?
Oh, yeah.
They came in with four routes and everybody hated them because they affected four whole different groups of people. They, and again, they, they build the roads as their call, but I think they'd be much better off picking a route.
Yeah.
And saying, here's what we're proposing, because that's gonna eliminate three groups of the people that are gonna get upset for no reason, right? But that's just my two cents, because if they throw out these four proposed routes, they're gonna have everybody along every one of those routes, you know, upset. Yes, sir.
In fairness to DOT, if you're using federal funding, it, it may be four, I thought it was three, I will guarantee that, but they're required to analyze three routes for the environmental, their environmental impact studies that they have to do. Whether that's three or four, I'm not sure, but that's the reason that they've done multiple routes. I do agree with you that that creates a lot of consternation.
Commissioner Davis?
Consternation is an excellent word. It's, it's, I'm starting to call it the cone of uncertainty, it's like a hurricane. They have all these different routes and they're, and it's a pretty broad cone of uncertainty around these routes and so it's affecting a lot, it's affecting the sleep of folks who are paying attention, of a lot of our neighbors, and I find that not so great. But, you know, I think that there's, there's limited routes that make a lot of sense environmentally, for residents, everything else, and I just, every time I look at a map of our county and where these things are coming through, I just go, I really hope we end up keeping the Nature Coast the Nature Coast, so.
Yeah, I, my thing is, is just like before, we don't wanna be on the, at the end of this process, we need to be out at the front of the process because remember what happened last time? We had everybody from Marion County and everybody else come in here and, and raised such an uproar that even before we even got a chance to talk about it, I think the governor was sending, a, a different governor at the time, was sending out letters saying he was gonna kill the project. So, because they got so many people so upset about all these different things, so again, we'll have to see what happens. But I, to answer the speaker's question, you probably know just about as much about this as we do because what I know about it, I, I saw from the notice the DOT sent out. I mean, that came as an email that I saw. So hopefully they'll gather information, they'll do their analysis, they'll come in and tell us what they're thinking and then we'll be able to take some kind of official position once we hear it, but can't really do that without the data, so. Any, any other comments on it? Okay, let's move on then to give, announce the upcoming meetings. Those will be the regular meeting of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at one o'clock. We're gonna have a regular meeting of January fourth at one o'clock and I'll point out that that is not the second Tuesday, now we're moving to the first Tuesday in January. And then also the second meeting in January will be January the eighteenth, again at one o'clock. We have a special workshop for the county commissioners, the board retreat on January fifth at nine AM at the Canto Government Building and we also today approved the January twenty-eighth summit at the same location. Just to remind folks too, that when we recess here in a few minutes, we'll be back at five oh one for the public hearings, but I also would remind the, the first vice chair and the second vice chair to stick around, sign documents for the clerk. It's been so patient and sat here and waited on all this discussion and yes, Mr. Oliver, you had a comment?
I just wanted to get a clarification on last time, did you want me to print out the four routes so that you had them to, to analyze, I can put it on big paper and have a discussion about that, or would you prefer to wait?
Do we know that that's gonna be the four routes that are under study? I mean, are we premature in looking at them or do we, should we wait till they come back and say this is what we wanna do, so?
That's up to you all. I mean, the last time, you're a hundred percent correct, DOT threw out a number of things and it didn't.
I, I would say, my feeling is give us what they're giving out, so we have the same information that they're giving to public and that, that would only make sense then we know what they're giving.
Remember on those task force, they didn't wanna talk about routes?
No, no, they, they never once wanted to talk about routes, so. Okay, so we, I think we've covered everything, we're up to that, we've announced the meeting, so the way I see it, we are gonna recess until five oh one, is that correct, everybody? We're gonna come back and deal with our public hearings, so in that case, we're recessed until five oh one. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Where, where do you wanna sit? Thank you very, and exactly, just turn.
I give credit where credit's due.
All right. Everybody, we will reconvene our meeting for our five oh one public hearings. Thank you all for being here. And before we begin, I wanna go over a couple of housekeeping procedures, so this will apply to both hearings tonight. We have a, scheduled at five oh one and T two scheduled at five oh five. So to ensure everything runs smoothly, we're going to just cover a couple of these areas. We're gonna give the applicant the first opportunity to make a presentation and after that, county staff will make its presentation, then the commission will open it up to the public. Once the public portion is closed, the applicant will have an opportunity to make a brief rebuttal to anything that they hear in opposition. Then I'm gonna open it up to the commission for a discussion. If any person decides to appeal any decision made by the commission with respect to any matter considered at this hearing, he or she will need a record of the proceedings and for such purpose, he or she may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceeding is made, which record includes testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is based. During the public portion of this hearing, proponents and opponents' comments will be limited to three minutes for individuals and five minutes for an organization. We do not give staff or the applicant a time limit. When anyone wishing to speak comes to the podium, they must print their name, address, and number of the application on the green card and give it to the clerk. If you're representing an organization, you must have a letter on file to speak on their behalf. Comments from the public and parties must be limited to the subject before the commission today. When anyone comes up to speak, we expect everyone to conduct themselves in manner fitting this professional setting. Personal attacks and other inappropriate behavior are discouraged and if this occurs, you'll be asked to sit down. Additionally, when you come up, this is the time for you to comment and make your comments needed directly to the chairman. I don't expect this to be a long proceeding, but if it is and the commission at its own discretion needs to take a recess, we just remind everybody not to speak with anybody during that time in regards to what's in front of us. And if a formal party to the proceedings makes an objection, anyone who is speaking at the time must stop and wait for the objection to either be sustained or overruled. Okay, and in a moment, I'll give the opportunity for the applicant to, and everybody to take any care of procedural concerns. So, first of all, so let's deal with that first. Either the applicants have any questions about procedure, are they good with that? Are all good? Okay. So with that said, Madam Attorney, you wanna read the ordinance for us and do your ex parte quiz and that type of thing?
Yes, sure. Thank you, sir. With regard to PUD dash twenty-one dash one-one and PUD dash twenty-one dash twelve, do the commissioners have any ex parte communications they need to disclose? And we'll start with Commissioner Carnahan?
No.
No.
No, but I do have a slight disclosure, just to air with extreme confidence. Mr. Legree and I are very, very longtime friends, so I just want, that has nothing to do, I haven't discussed this project with them, but I just think for the record, people should know, he's not a stranger to me, so I just want that in the record.
No.
Thank you. With regard to T one, it is PUD dash twenty-one dash one-one. At the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County Land Development Code Atlas, and an existing master plan to include covered RV and boat storage, providing for applicability, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, providing for severability, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. So at this time, we are ready to begin to hear from the applicant, I believe, on PUD twenty-one dash eleven. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. For the recording, Mike Wilburn, Local Engineering, Inc., PO Box nine three eight, Floral City, Florida. This is a previous PUD that you guys have, some of you guys have entertained before, PUD twenty dash ten. This is an amendment to that PUD. Basically, it is a old bowling alley that is being converted into storage, that's what you previously heard. However, the old bowling alley had a large parking lot on the north side, as you'll soon see, and also on the south side. So the owner would like the ability to put storage on the south side and that storage facility is, or that storage building is ninety-six hundred square feet. And then on the north side, he would like to be able to have covered RV storage and boat storage. One of them will be attached to the building. I say attached, it'll look like it's attached, but it's a freestanding structure and both of those total, they're both the same size, they both total eleven thousand six hundred and eighty-five square feet. Because it's on existing asphalt and the parking is already there, there's no changes to any stormwater, there's no stormwater impacts, there's no swift mudding, it's gonna be an exemption from swift mud, so there's no impacts to any adjacent neighbors or anything like that in terms of stormwater. There's no changes to an existing stormwater structure or an ERP on site that's currently active and functioning properly. I would also like to note that there's no proposed RV storage on the south side of the building. That's an agreement that they have existing already, so that's why there's a building there and no RV storage on the south side of the building. I would also like to point out that the PUD, just for clarification, the existing bowling alley be allowed to be mini warehouse storage within the existing footprint as well as within the existing structure, not, not expanding that, but keeping the existing structure and the existing footprint. Previously, that was twenty dash ten, but the square footage of that is, is still in the works, determining how big that is because there is a basement in that facility. So other than that, that's, that's pretty much all I have, it's pretty simple. It's an existing, already approved, storage facility, twenty, twenty dash ten, we're just asking to make a couple modifications to the north side and the south side utilized property. Same entrances, same traffic flow, nothing changes.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicants this time?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Slaybock?
The RV storage, I'm trying to figure it out. And facing the building, is it on the right or the left?
If you're facing the building from four ninety-one, it's gonna be on the right.
And, and how are you gonna, is it covered storage? What is it?
It's covered storage.
Okay, 'cause I couldn't figure that out, I'm not.
So they'll, they'll pull in the existing entrance and drive in front of the building and then be able to utilize that space.
Sorry. Thank you, sir.
It's okay. Any other questions at this time to the applicant? Thanks, sir. Listen to the staff presentation now.
Good afternoon. Joe Hockadel, Principal Planner. As Mr. Wilburn stated, this application is amending a previously approved plan unit development. The previous plan unit development allowed for GNC uses and mini warehouse uses at the old Beverly Hills Bowling Alley site. The amendment is to now allow for covered RV and boat storage as well. Here you can see, this is a view of the south side of the bowling alley where the proposed mini storage building is, is to be located. And this is a view of the north side of the building where the proposed covered RV and boat storage is to be. And here's the master plan. The mini warehouse use is the red box on the left side, that's the south side, and the covered RV boat storage is the red rectangles on the right side and that's the north side. The applicant is not requesting any deviations as part of this request and so any new development will have to meet the LDC requirements at time of permitting. The findings of fact have all been found to be positive findings and at the October twenty-first hearing, the Planning and Development Commission recommended approval of this application with conditions.
Okay. Any questions to staff, commissioners? I saw there's ten conditions listed on this as the applicant. Is the applicant comfortable in agreement with those 10 conditions? Okay. All right, very good. Well, at this time, we'll open this to a public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this? Anyone to speak in favor? Third and final time. Anyone speak in favor? Is anyone here to speak in opposition to this? Is anyone here opposed? Third and final time, anyone opposed to this? We will close the public hearing. And commissioners, before we move on, I forgot one little thing, and it'll apply to both. Could I get a motion at this time to adopt the backup materials into evidence? So that we, everything that's been provided to us on both these issues can be formally adopted? Okay, so Commissioner Carnahan makes that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kennard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Okay, commissioners, so what do you wish to do with PUD-21-11?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
I'd make a motion that we approve and adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the ordinance for PUD-21-11, Local Engineering, Inc., for Affordable Storage of Beverly Hills LLC, and direct the clerk to execute the ordinance.
Second.
And it's seconded by Commissioner Carnahan. Can I ask you to include, based on findings of fact and competent and substantial evidence?
Yes.
Thank you. Very good. Commissioner Carnahan, you have a problem with that?
No, sir.
All right, great. So, we have that included in the motion as well. Is there any further discussion now of the commissioners? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next up is item T2, which is PUD-21-12. Madam Clerk, you want to read that for us if we need to? Madam Clerk, I keep calling you the clerk.
That's okay.
Madam Attorney.
Thank you. At the conclusion of this public hearing, you're gonna be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County Land Development Code Atlas by redesignating approximately 3.3 acres from professional services and office district to professional services and office district with a planned unit development to allow multifamily use for more than one, excuse me, multifamily use of more than four units per acre, providing for applicability, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, providing for severability, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. The applicant ready to make the presentation?
Good evening. My name is Terry Legree. The address is 3793 West Crystal Downs Path, La Canto, Florida. I am a local businessman and landscape architect and land planner, and I've been in the county for 36 years. Love Citrus County. Today, I'm before you to respectfully request approval of a PUD application before you that's on a 3.3 acre parcel just north of Metacrest on Highway 486. The project will contain 32 units. It'll be a mixture of duplexes and quadplexes. There'll be a Florida coastal style architecture, is what I'm looking at at this point. We are looking at two and three bedroom homes with two baths, each two and a half baths. And we're really putting an emphasis on outdoor living with green spaces out in front of the units, parking in the back, nice buffering. And a recreational amenity will be placed on the southeast corner, which has yet to be planned. So, the project will be well-designed. It'll be well landscaped. I guarantee you that. And looking forward to making a nice addition to Citrus County. So, my goal is to do that and make us all proud of it. So, if there are any questions you have, please let me know.
Do you miss raise any question to the applicant?
No, sir.
Just one. The PDC adopted this with the 12 conditions. You're comfortable with the 12 conditions?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, staff, you ready?
This is 3.3 acres in the PSO land use district. And if you want four units or more in the PSO district, you do need a PUD for multifamily. So, that's what he's applied for. You can see it is in the PSO area. There are, I don't know if that's this one or not. There also is some high density residential there on 486 and an existing apartment complex across Miller Run. This is looking down Miller Run. You can see the apartment complex on the left. And on the right is the vacant land that is part of this application. They're asking for 32 units at a density of 9.7 dwelling units. They are allowed up to 10. And this is a view that the applicant provided of kind of their concept plan. And another view that he recently provided since the PDC to talk about the duplexes and quadplexes that he mentioned. And one more view. This is the master plan. There are two deviations in this master plan. One is they want to do 20-foot wide drives, whereas two-way traffic calls for 24-foot wide. Our fire services reviewers had no concern with that. The other deviation is a nine-foot by 20-foot parking space. Obviously, not the handicapped spaces, but regular, instead of our 10 by 20. That's not unusual. So, the PDC had no concern with that. As Mr. Kitchen, Commissioner Kitchen mentioned, there was recommended for approval by the PDC. There are 12 conditions of approval.
Thank you. Commissioners, any question of staff? Okay, we will open this up then to the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone speak in favor? Third and final time, anyone speak in favor? Is anyone here to speak against this application? Is anyone opposed to this application? Third and final time, anyone opposed to this application? So, we have concluded the public hearing. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with PUD-21-12? Yes.
Okay, I'll see if I can trot this out on the line. We all laughed about it. I make a motion that we, based on findings of fact and competent and substantial evidence, I move that we adopt and authorize the chairman to execute ordinance for PUD-21-12, Darrell Legree for Gulf to Lake Associates, LLLP, and direct the clerk to execute the ordinance.
Second.
Second, I have the second, like Mr. Carnahan first. What a great motion. Yeah, that was, that was.
Chair.
Yes.
Her mic wasn't on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There was so much feedback, I turned it off.
There is a lot of feedback. Okay. You did it so well the first time.
You gotta be kidding me. This day will never end.
Don't be so dramatic.
We're sorry, it's been a long day.
Based on findings of fact and competent and substantial evidence, I move that we adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the ordinance for PUD-21-12, Darrell Legree for Gulf to Lake Associates, LLLP, and direct the clerk to execute the ordinance.
And I believe Commissioner Carnahan's mic was only made to second.
Second.
Okay. All right, so now we have a motion to second. Commissioners, we've had the public input.[1771.12]